Honors for out there risking their lives every day to assist all those in need. Please hold us in your hands. We ask this in the name of Jesus our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is a special meeting of the Lafayette City Council. We have an introductory ordinance. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available. Anyone wishing to address the council, the three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City Ordinance 67, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of the City General Fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $100,000 and appropriating within the Parks and Recreation Department to fund the Lafayette Recreation Summer Enrichment Programs.
Get a motion in a second. Motion by Knockan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
We have a couple of questions for Mr. Conway. Is he here?
You may need to put a little closer to the microphone. Thanks.
And I'll take this while we're speaking. Good evening, Hollis.
Good evening.
We spoke earlier today and you answered most of my questions. I do have just one or two more. In reference to the amount that we're allocating for this, how did we arrive at that amount?
Well, we looked at the possibility of hosting maybe six or seven camps and what we could do to kind of alleviate some of the costs for some of the kids and some of the supplies. And we figured maybe somewhere around $15,000 per camp would be able to help get those camps off the ground.
Okay. At this point, we're still not sure how many camps we're going to have, right?
Well, right now, we have about six camps, but we have the potential to have a few other camps. We're still trying to push their, their process, get them in place to handle that. That way, this fund will give us a little room that if some additional camps happen, we'll be able to serve them. Our ideal, and it was really led by our mayor president, that we have to find a way to serve with our kids. We need to try to have as many kids in camps as possible. And so, we don't want to, we don't want to close any doors as of yet.
I understand, and that's great. I'm glad, I'm glad, we're certainly glad we're doing this. So, the, the, the directors, I'm gonna call them directors.
Camp directors?
Yeah, yeah, the people that are putting on the camps. Are we paying them a stipend or salary out of this?
No, sir.
We're not?
No.
So...
The proposals from the, the camps were what it would cost to help put on the camp. And so, we wanted to offer our facilities. We wanted to offer any, maybe some stipend to help reduce some of the camp fees and also provide some of the supplies. But there's also a long-term aspect of this. There's some things that we want to do on a long term, long-term, that we may be able to provide some supplies that we own, that they may be able to utilize, and we'll be able to continue to utilize them throughout the year.
Have we given any consideration to, to sponsoring underprivileged kids that may not be able to afford the tuition?
Yes, we, we have, we're looking at every contingency. Granted, we're, we got a short amount of time, so we're trying to navigate a whole lot of deals. But we want to make sure that kids that cannot afford to get to camp, get to camp. And we'll help as many as we can, and then we'll reduce the cost for those who can come. And of course, there's always those who can pay.
Yeah, I understand. And I'm just concerned about those that may not be able to afford it.
Yeah, we're gonna try to help as many as we can.
Okay. So, it's, so it's a possibility that, that we won't spend the whole $100,000, right? It's just...
Anything's possible. Anything's possible. The goal is, is that, you know, there's, there's still camps and kids that we want to reach. So, the goal is to use those funds to reach those kids. But, you know, with the amount of time that we have, there is a possibility that those providers may not be able to put their proposal together in time.
Okay, so I would just appreciate it if we do everything within our power to make these as accessible as possible and, and do what we can to assist those kids that come from poor families that may not be able to afford the cost.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And all, all these camps, because this is a city council introductory ordinance, is, are all these, are the funds going to only city Lafayette Parks and Recreation Centers?
Absolutely.
Within the city of Lafayette?
Absolutely. They're using our, our rec centers.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Hollis, will they, will lunch be provided?
In many cases, they've partnered with, and I forget his name, but there's, they were housed out of Dupuy. They're going to provide lunch, and I think LPSS also is going to provide breakfast to a couple of our camps.
So, they will go at the camp or be transferred back and forth like they used to do?
They're gonna bring, they're gonna bring it to the location. Those camps that have extended hours, they will be provided lunch.
Okay. And I know you talk about the fee. So, this year, you're asking for $100,000. I mean, now, next year, will that increase to try to serve more kids? Or you're gonna try to keep that at that limit? Or it's pretty much...
No, we like to serve as many kids as we can. And our hopes is that we find camps that, that are self-sufficient, but where they're not self-sufficient, we obviously want to help as much as we can. So, I mean, I've not had a lot of time to research everything in the past, but what we're doing now and, and the approach that we're taking is a phenomenal approach. You know, when the mayor talks about public-private partnerships, these camps, they're first-class camps that have their, everything together. We're gonna help them as much as possible.
Well, I heard you mention the mayor's name twice. Can you ask him if he's gonna increase that budget this year?
Hold, hold on. Mayor, you were already buzzed in, so here you go.
All right. No, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, actually, to all our Councilmen for considering this. We all have the desire to help out our kids and, and give them something productive. But to answer your question, it depends. The idea is that we, we actually ask for less dollars and that we still provide the same service. We just didn't, as, as the director mentioned, we just didn't have enough time to, to achieve that. This year, we had this discussion, I think, a couple of weeks ago, you know, with, with these camps, they usually start planning around December, January timeframe. December, January this past year didn't look like most December and Januaries with the COVID situation. We didn't even know if we were gonna be able to have summer camps. But thank you to our, our Parks and Recreation Department and Hollis's leadership and his, his other leaders in the department to actually make this happen. But to Councilman Lazard's point, we're on the same page. Look, we, we gotta get to a point where the low-to-modern income families that just quite frankly can't afford it, we need to be, we as a, as a society, we as a city, need to find a way to be able to allow those kids to have that same opportunity. I am very confident by next year, we're gonna have that planned out and figured out, whether it's through a stipend or some other way of legal conchiment on how we can lawfully do that. But there's a way to do it. We just maybe not have the procedural vehicle in front of us right now. But if these public-private partnerships achieve what we believe they'll, they'll achieve, we'll be able to provide these services at, at less than $100,000. But we don't know, is the honest answer, but we're definitely gonna try to be as cost-effective as we can.
Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
All right, my turn. Okay, I just have a couple of questions. The camp directors, are they paying any kind of rental fee to our facilities?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Are they keeping a percentage of the registration or all the registration personally? Are we, you know, because I know when the arrangement that we used to have is they would pay a, maybe they wouldn't pay a rental fee, but, but we kept a certain percentage of what their registrations were. And, and I'm just curious what the model is.
So, I'm not sure what we did before I got here. What the arrangement that we have now is that they come in and they submit a budget to me.
Okay.
You know, camp fees, supplies, everything that they need. And we were just gonna assist them in reducing those camp fees and providing some of the supplies.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so you're actually, you're helping them with their supplies.
Yes.
So, maybe that, yeah, that can help them in terms of some of the registration.
And, and in some cases, like swimming, you know, we may cover the, the lifeguards or some things like that. Swimming is much smaller budget, but each camp has different dynamics. And so, we're working with legal to make sure we do everything proper in place. But the idea is to make sure the camp is accessible to the campers and maybe provide some of the supplies that they need. But in some of these cases, it, it might be better for us to purchase the supplies that we own and that we can use for a camp-type experience throughout the year, maybe after-school programs, to program our facilities. So, it's a win-win in those situations.
Yeah, I mean, I love that partnership. That sounds like a great partnership moving forward as well. And we have so many people in the community that are willing to do, that want to do camps within our Parks and Rec Department. So, I guess it's a matter of just kind of getting them lined up, moving forward. One thing we could look at for next year is sponsorships, like a sponsorship for kids. I know that I have a running program that I do, and, and for some of the kids that can't afford it, we have, we go to businesses and we get a sponsorship who help pay for that, for those kids. So, that might be something in the future that we look, you know, we create a sponsorship, you know, opportunity that, so that, you know, I mean, so that we, you know, every year for the camps in the past, I remember, we, we lost about $100,000. I mean, that was just, and, and I don't want to say it was a loss, because it was a service we're providing that's much needed in the summer for these kids. And we need to put them, to give them an opportunity to get off the street, to be enriched in, in any, any way we can. That kind of, kind of an opportunity is, is great for them. But it wasn't, it wasn't a money-making deal, and I don't, I don't think any of us expected to be a money-making opportunity at this point either. But if we can, you know, if we're, if we're looking at this $100,000 to help kids go to camp, maybe that needs some help with registrations, that might be, and maybe too soon this summer to look, but I'm just thinking, suggesting maybe, you know, starting, preparing for next summer, that we look at some sponsorship-type opportunities where, you know, I could sponsor a child, or someone could sponsor a child for a summer program. So, that might be an opportunity to, to help with, with funding. So, but anyway, thank you for all you're doing. I think it's, I'm glad that we're able to pull something together for the kids this summer. And, and just from some of the stuff you've talked about, there's some really cool stuff that's, that y'all've lined up.
We're excited.
Yeah, so, thank you.
And Hollis is, is working on the sponsorship program. We couldn't get it for this, this summer, but Councilwoman Annette Cook's gonna be your first donation. She just said on the...
Write a check.
I will, too.
Thank you in advance.
No, but you're, you're right on. But also, just, I want to clarify, there are camps that are free. So, we, we put them out there to LCG, on the LCG Facebook page, Jamie Angel Communications, them, they, they publish it. Of course, with the storm, we hadn't been able to publish too much other than that information. But I'm, great, we're on the same page. So, and any ideas, I welcome it from the council, and I appreciate you guys. Yes, yes, on our, on our Facebook page. And is it on our Facebook, our website yet?
Yeah, we're gonna start advertising right after this meeting. I wanted to get through this meeting before we start advertising. And things are changing, just like one of our camps, it said up to 50 campers, they can now do 180 campers. So, things are moving pretty, pretty quickly.
And I think Councilmembers, you have a list of the actual programs at your seat with the times and locations of all of them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seeing anything? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to introduce is approved.
All right, I'm gonna adjourn the city council special meeting, and I can then now call the 5:30 regular council meeting to order. All right, we welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As presider, presiding officer and chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address this council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to Council Clerk, Ms. Veronica L. Williams, seated to my left. When addressing the council, please state your name and title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be into effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. And finally, all documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Mr. Kyle, Council Meeting Security, which he will celebrate on May 28th. Happy birthday. And thank you for all you do, and happy 21st. I don't have any council announcements. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to bring attention to something. I got a lot of calls yesterday, which I'm sure a lot of people got some calls yesterday about the, the water issues. I got several calls about how do we get a barricade up? Like, the streets were flooding, cars were flying through, causing water to push up into their homes. And so, they were curious as to how to get something like this to happen. So, thank you to V. She followed up for me, and I found out some, some information. So, traffic's roads and bridges do not provide road closure barricades. So, that's something good to know. Until an authorized directive is given by the sheriff's office or the Lafayette Police Department, deeming a roadway as unsafe for travel resulted from flooding, they will however assist with said closures upon the authorization notification of the same. So, in the event that you need something, you need attention for a flooded road and you need, you, you want it closed, your best bet is to call 911. You, you know, you call 911 and basically report flooded streets. And then, from that point, they will determine whether it needs to be closed, and they will alert Public Works and get the barricade. So, that they work together on that. So, just again, for your FYI, that, that's how we can get that done if you need that done, you know, in a situation like last night. I was getting that call about eight, nine o'clock last night. And so, we had the, the police department went out and actually rescued a woman from her house, but there was a little disconnect on how to get the, the barricade. So, the police, the police department will actually call if you request it through them. So, just so you know, that's kind of the, the route you can go. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Executive Mayor President Report. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to recognize, we have one elected official, Conrad Como, in the, in the audience. Appreciate our tax assessor and all that he does. And just to remind everybody, he just assessed the taxes. He doesn't come grabbing from you. So, don't be fussing at him when he, when you're over there. Also, we have Ms. Sarah Daye from Senator Kennedy's office. And, and I would tell you, like, Sarah is on top of our game. She, I know she messages you guys, messages me, and, and it really is, for all of our public out there, it's really comforting knowing that we have support from the federal legislature, or federal delegation from, from Washington to Louisiana down here locally. So, we appreciate you attending our meeting and always checking up on us. You represent your district very well. So, thank you. Am I missing any other elected officials, anybody out there? And on my glasses, near side, I see Lori very well. But anyway, other than that, Madam Chair, just want to give a real shout out to our, to our guys out there, our LUS workers. Had everybody restored as far as power goes within a couple of hours. Our police department, our fire department, our LUS fiber guys were out there making sure we're all connected. So, thank you to Ron. Thank you to our two chiefs back there. Just really good team effort. We, we try to go above and beyond as far as to be proactive and run these 24-hour services. We try to avoid a curfew, and last night, we had to do one to let these guys do their job, but they did it. And, you know, traffic roads and bridges was out there barricading. The councilwoman explained the process very well, thank you. But they proactively barricaded some, some prone areas. So, just kudos to Lafayette Consolidated Government workers out there. You, you're definitely in our hearts and our prayers, and, and we just appreciate you. So, that's all I have, and thank you to the council.
Thank you. Mayor, would you be able to shed some insight as to a comparison? Maybe someone from Public Works may be better to speak to that unless you would feel comfortable doing so. Is the comparison, we've received a lot of rain all at once. It just came down. Even the meteorologists were saying today, they were shocked. They weren't anticipating this level of rain in the forecast. Is, do we have a comparison of how much rain came down last night as opposed to 2016 in comparison to that?
So, we have our Director of Public Works, Chad Navo, coming up. And I, I think you're spot on, though. Just, just being a layperson looking at it, I mean, you could tell that the water was coming down at a high rate of speed. I know that Chad and Fred ran some numbers. I think it's a 75 to 100-year event. But if you could, Chad, give us a little comparative analysis.
Well, so, you know, Chad Navo, Director of Public Works, you know, we're still collecting data. Just, you know, it just happened. And of course, we're still under flood watch. So, we currently watching the weather and seeing, make sure, you know, hopefully what we, happened yesterday afternoon, you know, doesn't happen again, because obviously, everything's full and the capacity in the river right now. But it, it appeared about seven inches of rain, at least I know at my house, fell in about two and a half hours. And, you know, that's, that, that's not 2016 where we had 30 inches over three days. But again, you know, with more rain coming, you know, we still have to be concerned a little bit that we took a really bad rainstorm yesterday, a rain event, and, and, you know, maybe anticipating some more rain. So, certainly not 2016, but the intensity of the rain that happened that short period of time can create some real severe problems as we've witnessed yesterday. And, you know, we're most of the night on the phone with everyone, getting our crews together, making sure everybody's working together. And of course, the mayor's put, you know, staying up on us all, all evening, making sure everybody is out there trying to do the best they can. And we appreciate his motivation, and I think it worked out really good. So, again, we're watching to see what's going on over, you know, the next couple of days. And hopefully, we won't get any more rain, and certainly will not be at 2016, you know? Because I know the river was at least two and a half feet, three feet higher than, than it is right now in 2016.
Perfect.
So, this is not a 2016 event, although we did see, you know, a significant amount of rain in a very small period of time.
And Chad, maybe you can allude to this or comment on this. But we're also seeing some areas in the city and the parish even that has taken on some floodwaters where they didn't take on floodwaters in 2016. And then, 2016, and then flip it, you know, vice versa, where they did flood, and then whether some of our drainage efforts or, or maybe just the, the way that the storm event was, didn't take on water this time. I would just offer this to everybody. No, no storm event is the same, you know, it's not created equally. But it's good to have this historical data. It's good to be able to do a comparative analysis and model even. You know, if, we can't, when we're doing drainage projects and we're looking at the science and the engineering, while it's good to plug in the model of the 2016 flood, it's good to the 2019 flood, you know, or little flash flood event, that just gives us a historical analysis based on those particular conditions. So, everything's different, but, you know, it's good to, it's good to analyze, and it's really good to have a comparison, because I know that, that you all are getting called, we're getting called. So, this is a good discussion.
Yeah, I appreciate the question.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much. I don't have anything else. Councilman Lazard, you may have something you want to add? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just a brief comment, and this doesn't have to do with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Just a, just a brief comment in reference to that. I got a lot of phone calls and saw quite a few videos people sent me about people driving through the floodwaters, creating unnecessary waves. And, and that, to me, was the biggest problem we had on yesterday. You know, I had two homeowners call me. Their homes were dry. Streets were flooded, water was in their yards. Two big trucks driving through the water created waves and sent water into their homes that would not have been there otherwise. So, just to remind people about the dangers and the hazards of doing that.
Thank you. Great reminder. I did want to bring Sarah, Ms. Sarah, up. I know that you wanted to share some information with us about residents reporting any flooding incidents. So, please feel free to share the message from...
Appreciate it. Sorry for my rain gear. I've been on the road all day checking on everybody. If we can really push people to report any damage, and this is only to residential homes, this is not to cars, damage.la.gov, G O V, that would be a very great thing to push to all of your residents and everybody that's here, because that gives us a good list of how much damage has actually been sustained through this flooding and tornadoes that have happened in Acadia Parish. So, if you can push that around, we'd really appreciate that, to where we can, you know, assess and be able to, you know, possibly get some funding down for it. So, appreciate you guys and all you do.
Give that website again, please.
It's damage.la.gov.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Mayor, did I see on Facebook that we also want people to report it to us as well? We had a press release for that?
Yes, we do. So, please go to our website. We can look at archived press releases, but also, I'm gonna put a note, our comms guys in here, I'll put a note to our comms personnel to put on Facebook, and also to Sarah's website, too. So, you own it now, it's your website. So, call, email Sarah directly. She'll, she'll find you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So, two resources.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any others. So, we'll move on to resolutions. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City Resolution 9, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving the application 20210030 RTA for restoration tax abatement submitted by Champion Real Estate LLC for participation in the State of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program 102, Versailles, Boulevard.
Can I get a motion in a second, please? I have a motion by Pat Lewis, second by Annette Cook. Council discussion? I'm not, oh, Councilman Knockan, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Como. May I ask you to step forward? This tax abatement is basically to offset their expenses or some of their costs involved in the rest of the actual remodeling of this building.
That's correct.
Now, when these abatements were originally established, they were pretty much meant as this historical value in areas to keep buildings and commerce. But of course, since we, our prior president came in, we had created opportunity zones. It pretty much opened up the door for anyone to apply for these abatements, correct? In some case, in most cases.
Well...
Depending on the opportunity zone you're in, such as economic development district we have downtown.
There's a difference between opportunity zones and...
I'm sorry, do you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Yes, yes. Conrad Como, Lafayette Parish Assessor. There's a difference between opportunity zones and restoration abatements.
Right.
So, that's, they're two different programs.
But the qualification is to be in an economic development district of some sort, such as downtown economic development district, in order to be able to apply for the abatement.
I think that's correct.
Okay, sir, thank you. Now, the, this abatement we have here is going to basically forgive the tax on the improvements for five years.
Right.
And how much is that expected tax increase that we won't be collecting on the city's side and on the parish side per year?
That's a difficult number to come up with. I'll tell you why. What's happening with a lot of these buildings, and give you a little history there. City Council has done this for the old daily advertiser building for that technology company. They did it for another technology company down near the old antlers across the street where the public library was housed temporarily. There's another restoration abatement there, and there will be like 10 others in the downtown area that were used. And what happens in this case is a technology company needs a lot of electrical work done. Well, I think you probably know probably better than most people in here. When you do change your electricals in your house, you can't sell it for any more than you would have before.
Right.
Nobody's gonna pay you for that. But they're still having to do it. They had to change a chiller. Well, okay, you change your air conditioner, it doesn't increase the value of your house. Yes, you may be able to sell it quicker, but it doesn't increase the value. So, the problem here is that while they're spending $5 million in, in improvements, it's not going to generate $5 million worth of new value for that building. So, the best we can tell is probably gonna be somewhere in the range of $15,000 for the city, maybe 20 for the parish, over the, over the five years.
Over five years?
Over five years.
So, you're talking $3,000 a year for the city?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The, the only reason I was asking is because there's some figures that were printed out in the fee calculations and stuff. Estimated five-year tax exemption was 2.2 million. Where did that come from?
The state has this, this mechanism that they use for these programs. And if you, if you look a little bit deeper, it says the amount of improvements is $22 million.
Right, I saw that, too.
The building's not worth $22 million.
Right.
But what they do is they, they put it in this program where it, it's a multiplier effect of, okay, you're gonna spend $5 million, but it's gonna have this multiplier effect, and this is what it's going to be in the economy.
So, the actual improvements are...
About $5 million.
About $5 million, okay. So, this information that was provided to us is fairly misleading, it sounds like.
Let's just say it, it looks good.
Yes, it, it looks like there's a lot more going into it than actually is. Okay. And the contract is signed, I assume, with CGI already? You wouldn't know, be privy to that, but Mr. Matherne, is that correct? Is he here?
Yes.
He said yes.
Do you want to call him up?
His answer was yes.
Yeah, come on, come on up and make sure. Yeah, Conrad, we might need you just a little bit more. Hang on, there you go.
Well, we have two podiums, so, and they're both live.
Yeah, that's yours tonight.
This is mine.
That's yours tonight. Thank you, Conrad.
Sure.
Right here, Mr. Matherne. The other one, Mr. Matherne.
Yeah, the other one.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being and coming forward. You have this contract with CGI. It's already signed and good to go? Just identify yourself, please, for the record. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My name is Michael Matherne. I'm president of Champion Real Estate.
Yes, sir.
And a partner in the Versailles Center, 102 Versailles.
Okay.
I'm personally on the debt for this building. But have...
But having said that, yes, a contract has been signed with CGI and for three floors. We anticipate another 400 employees to come to Lafayette as a result of this, and I'm trying to get them to sign for another floor, which would create another 80 employees if they can get this contract. So what I think, what, what we're doing here is creating more income for taxes as a result of the jobs than you're giving up in your property tax revenue.
Right.
Because you, this, when we lost MidSouth Bank, we took it very personally.
Right.
So we had to borrow a ton of money just to keep the building afloat.
Right.
But the idea of the building being vacant costs more than spending the $6 million.
Right. I'm glad to find out these, these numbers are misleading and the fact that they bring in, they will bring in 400 new jobs.
Yes.
It is new jobs, it's not moving employees.
And these are, these are technology jobs. 30% of the employees they hire are from Louisiana universities. So if we've all been wondering why our kids are moving away, I mean, this is going to help keep some of these kids here.
Right.
I mean, my kid's planning on going to DC.
Right, right. Okay, so, and I apologize for looking at these numbers and they're being so misleading, but judging by what is here in my hand, this is a lot bigger project than $5 million. And it looked like it was going to...
It's going to be a big investment.
It's like Conrad was saying, they're talking additional $22 million in value to the building, you know, that's God willing.
I wish.
Yeah.
I wish. If you can find me an appraiser or buyer for $22 million, you can have it tomorrow.
And Conrad is correct in saying that when you start doing the electrical and the def mechanical and things like that, it adds no value to the building.
It was fire alarm systems and all kinds of things that the technology company required, and we required a tenant, and it was the only one around.
Okay, all right.
Our oil fields had dried up.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you both gentlemen for your time, and this kind of, Councilman, give me some direction here, because initially, I, I can't see just giving away tax dollars like that on, on an improvement of $20 million value.
It's not that much.
But it's not that, no, it's not.
No, it's, I wish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matherne. Thank you, Mr. Bro.
I'm Mr. Matherne.
Hold on one second. Are you done, Mr. Knockan?
I'm finished, thank you.
Will you mind buzzing out for me? Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
You have any idea how much was actually put into the building or did I miss that part in terms of bringing it up to code for them to use it?
Okay, I, we borrowed another $6 million to put into the building.
And was that primarily to accommodate the renovations for the GCI on those three floors?
Yes, we put a cap on ours, and then CGI is going to put up another $6 million because they have special requirements. But I had to replace the electrical boiler systems, safety features, and we literally gutted a large portion of that building and had to do elevators and all these upgrades that otherwise we wouldn't have to do if MidSouth had just kept afloat. Because trust me, I was better off with MidSouth with the cash flow that they were paying off, but apparently they invested too much in service companies and we had a $10 million swing on the whole deal.
But, but in terms, so when MidSouth moved out, correct me if I'm wrong, but when MidSouth moved out...
Yes.
We really took a hit in terms of the tax base, right?
Look, I took, I took a hit in terms of all kinds of things.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about, talking about the city. Slow down just a second, okay? I know you're excited about this, but you know, I'm talking, I'm talking about just the city, right? The city and the parish took a big hit, right? Because taxes are based, and Conrad, you might want to step back up as well?
That's correct, because what happened is the building lost value because now it's empty. Who wants to buy an empty building or practically empty, not totally? The assets of the company were no longer being taxed, that being the moveables as well as...
Accounts, right? As well as accounts, right?
Well, accounts aren't taxed.
Accounts aren't, but I mean, yeah.
I mean, you lose, but you do lose the tax on what's called bank stocks.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant.
So you have that loss. So yeah, there, there was quite a loss in property taxes, not to mention the income from the people that were there that were spending it in the area. There was losses, big losses, not to mention losses to the property owner as well, but yeah.
Okay, so when we say GCI is bringing in 400 employees, is that counting the employees they already have or these are 400 new employees?
My understanding from CGI is this is 400, there's CGI who does the cartoons and there's CGI Federal.
Right.
So this is CGI Federal, so they work for your CIA's, your FBI's, your Homeland Securities. They're the people who do facial recognition when you go in the airport.
Okay.
So they are the information source that keeps your country safe, apparently.
Okay, so...
But look, I don't ask them questions because I don't want to know too much about their business.
But, but the fact of the matter is, it's a significant number of employees that are going to be based downtown, that are going to be eating lunch in downtown restaurants, presumably.
And living downtown.
Living, that's what I was going to say, they're, they're young professionals and the downtown residential market is real hot right now, as we know. So even if a small percentage of these choose to live downtown, that's additional revenue that's going to be generated for the city. Am I, would that be correct?
Yes, I assembled the largest track of land, contiguous track of land downtown because I anticipate building housing for many of these employees because Lafayette Economic Development has been asking me to do this for 20 years and there was no demand. So we created demand with this tenant because your employees at MidSouth Bank lived all over. Your employees at CGI are coming in from other places and they're going to want to be downtown.
Okay.
So we're going to go invest some more money in some housing so you can have your retail, your restaurants and all that stuff boom.
And, and, and that's all because of these additional employees that are being brought to downtown?
Look, I wouldn't have done it if MidSouth didn't make me.
Okay. All right. That's good. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other council questions. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Just in closing...
I think we're done.
Yeah, that we're done, thank you. Just in closing, I'd appreciate it if we would look at this as an investment, an investment that we're going to gain a significant return on, might not be immediately, but, but over the long haul, we're going to gain a significant return on, on what I consider to be a small investment. And keep in mind, this is spread out over five years. True, they have an opportunity to come back and request a five-year extension, but, but that's okay, we'll, we'll deal with that when it comes up. But, but we're dealing, we're talking about a five, five years, spread out over five years. And to me, that's a, a small price to pay for the return that we're going to get on our investment. So I would strongly recommend that we support this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing any other council discussion. Do we have any public comment?
We do have one speaker, Michael Lunsford.
Mr. Lunsford, are you here? I'm not seeing him. Did he sign in to speak or just to say something?
He signed in. I'm sorry. He signed in, I'm sorry, he did not wish to speak, however, he opposes the RT, Restoration Tax Abatement.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go to a vote from the council.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, moving on to joint resolutions. This is a public hearing. Speakers she's are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
Joint Resolution 13, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of the 600 block of East Pinocch Road to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 472202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
I have a motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Knockan. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment.
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint Resolution 14, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of 332 Hilda Street to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 472202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
I have a motion by Mr. Lazard, second by Mr. Knockan. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comment.
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Moving on to reports and discussion items, Jeremy, will you please read?
Lafayette Police Department Training Update.
Councilman Lazard requested this item to be on the agenda, so I will give the floor to you, sir.
As you all remember, last year, we had an extensive discussion about, about, about police training and making sure that, that our officers had the best training available. This was even before Chief Glover came aboard, of course, and I think we knew we were in the process of hiring a, of hiring a new chief, so we thought it was only appropriate to wait until he came on board and have input in terms of how we were going to proceed with this. So this is not something new, this is something that's been in the works for some time. So Chief Glover has had the time he's needed to evaluate the department and see where we are and where we need to go in terms of training, so not only training, but also reform within the department. So Chief Glover, I turn it over to you.
Good evening to this illustrious body. I'm Thomas Glover, Chief of Police, and I am going to talk to you about a very important issue. In fact, it's probably tied with the use of force as the most important issue in policing today, and that's training. And I want to thank the administration and its council for the generous budget that we got last year, that totaled $1,000, $1,150,000. And the objective was to make sure that the Lafayette Police Department was one of the best trained, if not the best trained in the United States, and I can tell you that we're on our way to doing that. I'm very proud of being the police chief here. We have a great department and I can tell you that they work hard every day solving crime, and we've been putting the concentration on public safety, protection of property and preservation of life. As of now, we've encumbered in the amount of 206,000 all the way through April 30th. We got another 199,000 encumbered that we'll be training on. We have some special needs for our SWAT training, we're going to do some high-tech driving training. You have the presentation in front of you, 100,000 is going to be spent on community-based police initiatives and an image overhaul and another 7,500 on human trafficking. The next slide that you see is presentation number six, is what I'm going to concentrate my comments on. If you look, the first one said preservation of life and de-escalation. I think that's what this council and this administration had in mind when they allotted this money, and we've been working to, for that. The use of force policy in terms of the protection of property, managing critical incidents, and one thing that's very special to us is responding to people who are suffering a mental health crisis. I would be very glad when we get the budget, and I know you all are going to see it, I've already discussed it. We want to start a program called the Right Care Program where professional mental health workers respond with police officers, and when the need arises, they will be there to take over the situation and de-escalate and make it a diagnosis of what is necessary. There are some very successful programs around the country, Oakland, California, my old city, Dallas, Texas, Newark, New Jersey, Denver, Colorado. When you first look at something like this, you worry about the safety of the casework or the mental health professional, but we haven't had an instance in this country where programs like this have resulted in injury or harm done to the civilian caseworker. So it's a very good program and we're going to be concentrating on that. De-escalation, our officers are receiving training. In fact, we brought in one of the premier experts in the country from the Dolan Group to train some of our officers back in January and February in de-escalation techniques. And de-escalation techniques could be anything from being able to diagnose if a person is suffering, going through a mental crisis, all the way back to taking a step back when you're talking to someone. All of these are de-escalation techniques that we are being taught and trained in our department to make sure that we're doing everything that we can as a police department to continue to preserve the sanctity of life. In terms of the mental health, we are bringing in people going to teach us how to recognize autism, how to understand what the spectrums and what the illnesses are on the mental health crisis pages. So we are going to be working very hard on that. If you will, one of the things that we're also doing is we're going to be doing excessive, and I say excessive because it's going to be drilled into our officers, the use of force instructions. That's one of the areas where I'm paying close attention to. The disciplinary process will be applied when force is not justifiable or when force is unreasonable. We're going to make sure that that message is sent throughout the department, and that's one of the actual reforms that Mr. Lazard was referring to. If you go to page 14, these are some of the things that we have done and we've spent a lot of money on these. If you look down, you'll see less than lethal force is what we're calling it, the 40-millimeter launchers we've already purchased and are training 120 people on this. And the less than lethal force is meaning that when we have to apply force, it'll stop whatever the illegal action is, but it comes short of putting the person in harm's way. The 40-millimeter launcher works on kinetic energy. You take a projectile and you fire it out of a, an object that looks like a weapon, it's coated with a soft gel, and it'll hit a person, and quite frankly, it'll feel like Mike Tyson punch you and knock you down, and we can be able to take control of that situation. It's kinetic energy, it's dispersed throughout the entire area where it's hit, so it doesn't penetrate. Also, the bowler rap, and the best way I can explain the bowler rap is if you're a fan of, say Batman and Robin, he used to have a utility belt, and they'd pull a little device off and press the button, and it'd shoot out and it'd wrap the person up. We've ordered a series of those for our department as less than lethal force that we can be using. The taser is something that we already have, we're deploying those, that's a very good alternative to having to use a baton, a punch, a spray someone, so it disrupts a person's neuromuscular ability. So, and, and finally, on the last page that I'd like you to look at is page 15, de-escalation techniques. We are getting training in crisis intervention, hostage negotiation. Most people, when they look at hostage negotiation, don't look at it as a reduction in the use of force, but if we can talk a person out of a situation, if we can convince a person with our well-trained hostage negotiators, and we have 11 on the Lafayette Police Department that we're constantly training, then we can reduce the incidence of having to use force to go in and forcibly remove the person. Verbal de-escalation, autism, recognition and interaction, all of these are things that we're doing as a department to make sure that our officers who are well-trained, some of the best trained in this country, are reducing incidents where we have to use force. Any questions?
Yes, Chief, really appreciate this and I'm glad to see that we're finally moving in that direction. Just a couple of questions. The one thing I don't see here is anti, anti-bias training is the one thing I don't see here.
Yes.
Has any consideration been given to, to that?
We are, we have done anti-bias training and we'll be continuing with anti-bias training in the future. Everything that we trained in was not put on this. I have a list of about two pages, a single file, that I can supply the council on everything we trained on, but one of the things that I did was trying to pick out those things that would indicate that we're moving toward resolving issues without having to resort without having to resort to force. But we have had anti-bias training, and we're moving on some of it in the future. In fact, before October 31st, we'll probably have another three or four sessions of that.
So the plan is to teach that to all officers, I'm assuming, at some point?
Yes. Training is continuous. It's not just this year. I'm hoping that we can get some funding for next year to continue with this because it's an ongoing process, and it's a very important issue for us. And we actually have to pull officers off the street and put them through the classes. And when we do that, we reduce the number of people that are responding to calls. But what we want to do is make sure everybody does get the training, so it is strategically planned out over a period of time. I would assume that we still be training people this time next year on some of these things that I'm talking about.
What about psychiatric evaluations? That was one of the recommendations that was made by, and I'm not taking credit for this. That was actually a recommendation that was made by Parish Councilman A.B. Rubin. Mayor, you remember when we had the conversation about this last year? And that was one of the recommendations that A.B. made that we strongly said we thought was a good idea and we were in support of?
That's correct. And we have, and you probably can talk about it, Chief, both internally and externally as well. And there's even this training emotional CPR that has been talked about over the last few months that I definitely would wrap my arms around it. And any type of behavioral component that we can add to our officers, for our officers, I would support that.
As we know, we start out, are police officers, do they have to undergo a psychiatric evaluation at the time of hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
They are psychologically tested. And if an officer is involved in certain incidents, we do what is called a fitness for duty. If they're off for a long time and laying around idle and not working when they come back, we do a fitness for duty. And the doctors, the professionals, the PhDs have to clear them before they can come back, get in that car, and put the weapon on and start responding to calls for service.
But just as a matter of routine, I wish we'd consider doing that at certain intervals. You know, I'm not sure what those intervals would be, if it's every other year or every two years or whatever the case may be. Every two, just as a matter of, you know, matter of practice.
Right. That's certainly something that we'll discuss, and it's a very important issue for me. And if you look on page 11, you see the Emotional Survival. That class was put on about so maybe a month ago in a very respected doctor. Dr. Kevin Gil-Martin's group came to Lafayette and probably had about five, six dozen of our officers that go through that. And that program itself is designed to help reduce incidence of emotional distress, of intense behavior, and kind of level things out. And talking about psychological testing for police officers, anytime they go through a traumatic incident, I think psychological exams are pertinent. If they're involved in a deadly force incident, psychological exams are pertinent. And if they exhibit behavior on the job that is irregular or irrational, and that's the result of me as a chief of police in a disciplinary process, or an officer going through an Internal Affairs investigation, and we observe erratic behavior. So I do have the authority when I know that someone is not walking the line where I can order what we call a fitness for duty. So if behavior manifests itself in an officer doing something that gets my attention, or he is a chain of command or disciplinary action, then we can certainly have that as part of our arsenal of things that we can do to try to straighten it out.
Thank you. I have a quick question, Chief. First of all, thank you for everything you've done since you've been in town.
Thank you.
I've been seeing some really great things from the community walks to these trainings. So kudos to you and your team. Whenever we did our interview during the first initial round of interviews of all the candidates, my big concern, if you recall, was recruitment of new police officers into the force. Because there's just, you know, for me and my district is may have different concerns and issues than other members of the district. Is I have a lot of businesses. I have a lot of residential. Is so pretty unique situations out there. And I find that, you know, we have four people assigned to my precinct, and I think it's similar across all of our districts. Is where are you in the efforts of recruiting more police officers that we can have on the street? I know you were doing some, I don't know if now's the time for maybe you to speak to that?
Right. Three weeks ago, we reinstituted our recruiting officer position. And since that time, we've actually had a testing process at Turlin, which was 12 days ago. When I took over, we had one person in the process, and there was no one in the, what I call, pocket or in the till for us to pull out. We now have over 40 people that have applied and that are going through the process. Not all of them are going to make it. There are going to be some people disqualified for various reasons, but it's a step in the right direction. We have a full-time recruiter, and that person has hit the ground running. They've been in Alexandria, I believe, Shreveport. They've gone to Baton Rouge. And so we are definitely ramping up the efforts. You will see in upcoming budget, I'll be asking for more officers. And so that's something that I am definitely very passionate about. I think that, you know, like last night, people didn't notice, but between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, the police department responded to over 300 calls for service.
Yes, thank you for that.
And with the people that we have working the streets, that is astronomical. I wish I could call them all in and give them a steak dinner, but, you know, let's get them some help.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you for that. I know I speak for every council member when I say we appreciate those efforts. So thank you again, and let us know how we can help recruit more police officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other council members. Oh, I'm so sorry. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Chief, I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Your training, is it an ongoing thing, once a year or every so many months, every day? Or how does your training?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing. Training is mandated by the state statutes. And so that's annual training. But the training that you guys gave us the money for, we're doing it constantly all the time. We might have some week after next. We have it scheduled all the way up until, I believe, the last date I saw was October 20th or 21st. So it's ongoing. And at the beginning of the fiscal year, which was November 1st for Lafayette, not a lot of people who are experts in this field that we're looking into were making rounds coming into cities training. The restrictions in COVID have kind of relaxed, and we're a little more safer now. So we're able to schedule them back-to-back, week after week. We got a major training facility that we can go to. And so we are ramping it up now because the people who we count on to train us are starting to show up in Lafayette, and we're starting to schedule them.
Okay, so as guidelines you guys have to follow from the state or federal government, that you guys have to have so many hours of certain things, of training?
From the state of Louisiana.
Yes, the state of Louisiana. Telling you that your officers have to have so many hours of this or that?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to do something with the mental. I think you said earlier when you were doing your presentation that whenever someone go out there, a police officer go out there, they'll have someone if it's a mental case.
That is going to be something else that I will put in the budget. That's a paid position for a recognized, credentialed expert, mental health expert, and it's been repeated all over this country. And might I add, very successful. So I'd like to have the opportunity to put that program in play in the city of Lafayette.
So you plan on putting it in this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. We'd be looking.
All right. Along with a number of police officer positions, too.
Definitely that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other council members. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any public comments on the topic? All right, moving on. Ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 55, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify the property of case number ZON 2021-10119, St. Landry rezoning, located generally south of St. Landry Street, west of West University Avenue, and north of St. John Street. The particular parcel being rezoned from residential, single-family to mixed-use neighborhood.
I've got a motion by Ms. Cook. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Knockan. Council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City ordinance 56, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a dwelling, two-family duplex in a residential, single-family zoning district, case number ZON 2021-11141, Whittington Drive, conditional use permit, located generally south of Johnson Street, east of Catherine Street, and west of Oak Crest Drive.
Can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Pat, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? Motion to adopt is approved.
City ordinance 57, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code and the official map of the city of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number ZON 2021-12, 600 blocks, South Doming Avenue Annexation, located generally north of Ridge Road, east of South Doming Avenue, and south of Country Hollow Lane, and assigning a zoning classification of residential, single-family, and mixed-use neighborhood. District two.
All right, can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Knockan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved.
City ordinance 58, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for the salary for the permanent director of the Communications Administration and Support Division, LUS Fiber.
All right, can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Cook. Can I get a second? A second by Knockan. Any council discussion? I'm seeing the mayor-president. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the last week, I've had a lot of questions in regards to the legal process and the charter and how it relates to fiber. And I think it would be beneficial to us to call up Mike Abear, who's the Assistant City Parish Attorney, but he's the attorney for LUS Fiber. If you recall, this is before I got in office, but many of you guys served on the City Parish Council when fiber was separated from LUS. And I believe it was addressed in the charter, but I'll let someone that's much more learned on that topic than I am to come up to the mic with your permission.
Sure, come on down. Both mics are hot.
Evening, council members. Michael Abear, Assistant City Parish Attorney. This is not a new issue, and actually, this is some well-plowed ground back from 2018. You may recall, those of you who are here, in the 2018-2019 budget, the former Communications Division of the Utilities Department was split off from the Utilities Department and was established as its own department, now called the Communications System Department. From that time forward, the Communications System Department was no longer part of the Department of Utilities, which is relevant to the issue of what approvals are necessary for the director of the Communications System Department. You're well familiar, I'm sure, with the requirement in the charter that has to do with the Utilities Director, which is in Section 407B that says, "The director of the Utilities Department shall be appointed by the mayor-president, subject to approval by the city council in accordance with provisions included in current or future bond resolutions and covenants." It's noteworthy that that provision of the charter also in Section 407 mentions some other things. It mentions the Lafayette Public Power Authority. It mentions any division that might be spun off from the Utilities Department in the future. Yet, in reference to the appointment of the Utilities Director, it only says in 407B that the approval of the city council is required for the director of the Utilities Department. So for that reason, there is no council requirement for the approval of the director of the Communications System Department. We gave that opinion to the then-sitting council in 2018 as well. So this is kind of a repeat of that. But as the mayor-president said, I know there's been a lot of questions in recent weeks about that. So we dusted off those old opinions, took another closer look at it again, and sort of reconfirmed that that, in fact, was the case, not only under the pre-amendment charter, but also under the post-amendment charter as well. You have the same situation that applies there. In situations in which the council doesn't have approval of directors, we default to the general rule in the charter, which gives the mayor-president that power. There's a number of provisions in the charter that deal with that, most notably, Section 401 provides explicitly that the directors of all departments created by or under this charter shall be appointed by the mayor-president and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor-president. It says, it goes on to say, "except as otherwise provided by this charter." But there is no "except as otherwise provided" here with regard to the Communications System Department Director. So that leads us again to the ultimate conclusion, which I think is clear under the charter, that not just the Communications System Department, but all other departments other than utilities, the council doesn't have the power of approval of the director. So the question then arises, you're familiar with the requirement in the charter that you must also comply with the bond covenants when appointing the Utilities Director. So what do the bond covenants say about the Utilities Director and the fiber director? There is a set of bond covenants that pertain to the Utilities Department, and there is a separate set of bond covenants that pertain to LUS Fiber. They don't say the same thing with regard to the director. Both of those bond covenants call the director of those departments the chief operating officer. But if you read through those bond covenants, that is defined as the director of the department. So with regard to the Utilities Bond Ordinance, there's specific Section 1.1 that says that the consulting engineer for the utility system must approve the chief operating officer for the utility system, which is defined as the director of utilities. I mean, that's clear. We all agree on that. That's been the case probably since the late 1940s, that that's ever since there've been bond covenants in place, that that's been the situation. There's not a similar provision in the bond ordinances of the Communications Division, specifically in the ordinance that authorizes the outstanding communications revenue bonds. And for those of you keeping score, it's Section 9.1 of those covenants. It addresses the role of the consulting engineer in the operations of the Communications Division, and it does not contain that same requirement that the consulting engineer approve the director of the Communications Division. I would point out that those two sets of bond covenants make it clear, they make a clear distinction between the communications system make a clear distinction between the communications system and the utilities system. They specifically define those two things differently. So, I think it's clear, if you slap all those things together, that approval of the consulting engineer is not required for the fiber director. And again, this is kind of a repeat of some things that we talked about in 2018, and I think subsequently as well, when the interim directors were first appointed, we gave a similar opinion. So all that together leads to the conclusion that there's nothing in the charter or the bond covenants that requires that the council or the consulting engineer approve the director of the communication system, which of course we know is not the case for the utility system. So I think there's a clear distinction there, and, and I hope that that clarifies, even though it's kind of a repeat from a few years ago, of the distinction between how the charter and the bond covenants treat the Utilities Director and the Communication System Director. If you have any questions about that too, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor, do you have anything else you want to add?
Several, but not for Attorney Abear. I think Councilman Lazard had a question.
Well, we have a few people that have questions. Do you want to just take them as they come? You want to have those out?
I do, Madam Chair, but I'm gonna...
Oh, you have something you want to add?
Yeah, but it's not on topic with this, but whatever you want to do, I'll defer to you. So I would like also to call up Mr. Mesh to answer some questions, because there's, you know, I think he, I think y'all deserve to be able to ask him some questions directly. So my recommendation would be for the council to ask any questions on the legal side, and then maybe we can turn to that, but I'll defer to, to whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I tell you what, let's let council members speak, and then as people need, you guys just stay front row, stay close, and then we'll just go in line, so.
But while I have the mic, I will say this.
Yes.
I believe, and it's still hot, but...
You still have the mic?
I know, I know I join in y'all's support for LUS Fiber, and we all want to get this right. And quite frankly, we have to get this right, because we have $110 million debt out there. And it wasn't always $110 million, it kind of went down, and LUS loaned it some more money, but we're looking at about $110 million. We have to be competitive. I believe in this director, and I think after you guys talk to him, y'all, y'all will see what I see, or at least a glimpse of what, especially his leadership and his management, but his experience and his subject matter expertise. But we have got to get it right. You know, 17 years ago, when fiber was created, I'll be honest with you, I looked at it a little differently. I think a lot of people did. I looked at broadband and connectivity as more of a luxury. 2020's taught us a little bit, yeah, I mean, really, look fast forward now, you can't look at it that way. This is a utility. And now we have companies that are, that are very competitive in our state, very competitive. Since LUS Fiber's been in Lafayette, look at the competition that it's brought to Lafayette. Our citizens are better served. But we, as, as fiduciaries to the City of Lafayette, that are dedicated to protecting the City of Lafayette, dedicated to protecting the finances of the City of Lafayette, owe LUS Fiber and its customers the ability to compete, and we have to be competitive when we choose our chief operating officer. I have some other data as far as like salaries and things like that. I know that's the, the real issue of this particular ordinance. I'll hold off on that for a little bit, unless you guys have some questions, but I'm very eager. Y'all ask Mike all the tough questions, but y'all really ask Ryan the tough questions, because he's the guy that's going to lead us in there. His plan to make LUS Fiber competitive and grow it, and grow its customer base, and put it in a position, just like LUS, to pay an eye lot, everybody wins. The citizens of Lafayette wins, LUS Fiber can finally pay off this debt that we owe, and we have to do it. And by the way, there is no private sector in the telecommunications market. It used to be a private sector, there is no private sector. We have companies that client, that go under the cloak of a private sector industry, they get more money from the federal government than LUS Fiber's ever gotten. So we owe it to our people to be competitive. This gentleman will get us there.
Can you mind buzzing out? So I can let the next person? Thank you. I gotta find a better word than buzz out. Sounds like buzz off. I'm sorry about that. Let me find a better word. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
He's dying to go first, so. I'll let him go first. I'll go after.
Yeah, because I'm gonna be very brief.
Okay, Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
I think you're gonna probably take a little bit longer than I will, so. I'm gonna be very brief. Mike, can you tell me, in terms of, in terms of order, okay? Did the, did the spinoff occur before the new charter was adopted or afterwards?
I believe it happened before, and it, it happened as part of the 2018-2019 budget process, and I believe the charter vote was in 2019. I'll have a quick look at Paul over there. 20, 20, 2019, does that sound right? Yeah. So, yeah, the spinoff was before.
The spinoff was before.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got.
Doing a quick Google search, it says January 8, 2019.
Which was before the new charter was adopted.
Now, wouldn't that have been December 2018? Am I making that up? I guess, I tell you what, do you have someone here who can help get a clarification on that?
Well, I can, I can hop on my laptop a little bit later and find you when that election was, when the charter election was.
Because I think that's going to be pertinent information, I think is what we're looking for, right? So let's get clarification on both dates, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, correct. 2018.
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind, before we vote, we'd like clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that all you had?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to make sure, we talking about a bond, I think it's what, about $110 million, something like that? The debt, right. So what happens, I'm trying to figure all this out, what happens if, if we decide not to allow this gentleman? I know we came, from what I'm hearing, you're saying that it's up to, it's not up to the engineer consultant firm, it's up to the mayor president to decide who he wants to put in, in office and to pay what happened. My understanding is correct, that's what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what happens if we decide, as the council members decide not to allow this? What happens to that debt we have?
I, I think, I have to, I have to sort of take issue with your question, and I don't mean disrespect in how I'm answering, but...
Yes, yes.
I don't think the council has the authority to disallow it, is, is my point. That I think that's the mayor's prerogative under the charter.
Okay.
So, the council doesn't have a right of approval of this particular appointment.
You answered my question right, like that, I like that. Okay, thank you.
Finish.
That's all, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Do you mind closing out? Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Okay, my turn. I'm actually over all of that. I mean, he, you, you propose, I mean, you have, you have the authority to do what you did, so I, I think we've established that, as far as I'm concerned. I'm actually talking to the actual ordinance that we're looking at today as far as salaries. So, I have a question, what, what is the actual salary we're proposing? Right now, we're budgeted for 125. That was what his salary is budgeted for. What do you, what adjustment are you proposing for?
Hold on.
We gotta come up with some...
You're buzzed and hot. There you go.
Buzzing hot, Mike.
I'm trying them all out.
So I have a few little data points, I appreciate that, and also appreciate the clarifying point, that technically, yeah, the council can deny this raise, this is the ordinance on point, so we were requesting 175,000. Let me give you some things to consider. So, CTC is the fiber, is Fiber's engineer of record, but their subcontractor, Burns and McDonnell, which is LUS's contractor, contractor, consulting engineer. CTC is a consulting firm that offers independent strategic, technical, and financial guidance, primarily to public sector and nonprofit entities such as state, county, and local governments. So, they recommend anywhere from 120,000 to 210,000. So we also used Linked Executive Search, which was, is a firm hired to conduct a director search at, at this level, executive searches, COO, CEOs. They're a niche recruiter skilled facility at feeling hard to place positions, which I would say running a telecommunications market is a very hard to place position, definitely one we want to get right. Linked Executive Search searches at Forbes Top 10 for Best Executive Recruiting Firms in the Nation, two years in a row. We got the best of the best, because we want the best of the best. Their recommendation was anywhere from 236,000, and that's 175,000 base salary plus 35% bonus. We can't do that as a municipally-run telecommunications market. But 236 to 325,000, we believe that at 175,000, if you, if you take in the total compensation of this position with benefits, we think we're in that competitive range. The bottom line is, when, as, as Councilman Lewis said about paying off the debt, if we don't get someone hungry, if we don't get someone with entrepreneurial experience, if we don't get someone that has the thirst to do something different, to make easy wins, make tough decisions, we will be behind. This salary that we're proposing is competitive, but it's not unfair. It's, I, look, I'd love to be able to propose a $325,000 salary for you. I, I don't think that's fulfilling our fiduciary duty, okay? I think 175 is fair, but it's also competitive. And the last thing I want to lose is someone at this gentleman's caliber, and again, ask him all the tough questions you have, the last thing I want to do is lose someone like this to the, to another competitor, when it's easy to be competitive in this situation. The salary on its face may look a little lower, and it is. You can make more money at, at our competitors, but we believe with the total package that we're competitive, and I believe that the product that LUS Fiber delivers to, to Lafayette and to its customers is, is very competitive in and of itself, so I know that you're honored to be there.
Okay, well, I did a little research of my own, too.
Good deal.
So I, I actually was, did a little research on other director salaries averages in New York, 96,000. Louisiana, we're, average is 75,000 for a director of a fiber optic company. Texas, 68,000. California, 75,000. I looked at CGI, which again is another company along those same lines, and they pay 162,000, but they also have 76,000 employees. I mean, we're looking at, I believe, 77 employees, and, I mean, I just, I feel like, you know, we budgeted for 125, you know, if we're, we're gonna be responsible and, you know, do our, our, you know, fiduciary duty, which I believe we should be doing as well right now, with the debt that we already owe, I'm, you know, and, and it's nothing against you at all. I mean, it's, I am looking at the numbers in terms of what I feel like we should be capable of paying at this point, and I'm, I'd like to offer an amendment that we amend it to 125 at this point, and, and start with that.
Councilman, if, if we, first of all, with all due respect, you're way off. Those, to run a telecommunications company is, that's way off as far as a chief operating officer, it just, it just is. Okay, I mean, again, we have the, I mean, probably the best recruiter in the country. Give me another recruiter to, to hire a CEO, a COO type, that's been in the Forbes, that's not Forbes of Lafayette, that's not Forbes of Louisiana, it's Forbes United States, Forbes Top 10 in Best Executive Recruiting Firms for two straight years, to give us this recommended salary from 236 to 325. Look at our direct competitors from telecommunications market that are actually competing with LUS Fiber. I'm telling you, you want to pay off the debt, be competitive, but paying off the debts is nothing. We want to be better than that. We want to be better than just paying off our debt, but we can't continue to have the product that we've had for the last 17 years. We can't. We're behind the power curve. Some of that is in some strategic decisions that were outside of your control and outside of my control, but I do know this, this number that we're submitting is very fair, we have support for it, and I hope that you guys consider the actual industry.
Okay, I'll listen to a little more, a few more comments, I may have something else to add in a minute.
But I'd also ask you guys to ask the, um, the director, he's going to be with us. I mean, this guy, look, this is your, this is your director, ask him all the questions that you have.
Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Just out of curiosity, and this is not directed to you, Ryan, how, how long was the, the former interim director in that position? Was it Kayla?
Year and a half. Is he? Kayla was a year and a half.
About a year and a half?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is Ryan taking on any additional duties that, that Kayla didn't have?
Technically.
Go ahead.
From a pure factual basis, looking on, on the face of the document, no, but his business model is quite different, and it justifies this. He's worth more than what I'm asking you to pay him.
What do you mean by his business model is different?
Well, why don't you ask him, Councilman? I'm giving you the opportunity to ask a director all the questions that you want to ask. If you want substantive information, this, this gentleman is very well-versed, very educated. I had the benefit of having, and I'm offering to you, I've had the benefit of a Forbes Top 10 search committee, so.
I was just asking the question, and you started answering it, so, you know, I mean, that's fine, either way. So, the, the question was real simple, okay? What, what additional duties does he take, will he have that the former interim director for a year and a half didn't have? That, that's all. And, and you say there are no additional duties, but his business model is different. And I'm just asking to explain what that means.
That's correct. And this position was open, the interim director, who I'm very thankful for, who is still with LUS Fiber, who did a great job while we were transitioning through a world pandemic, kept LUS Fiber afloat. She had the opportunity to apply for this position, and should her qualifications and her ideas and her visions justify an additional salary increase, I would have pushed for that, too. She did not apply, she, thankfully, she's still with us, and I do implore the council with all of your questions to ask the director any questions that you have.
And that's my question. That I still haven't gotten an answer to.
I think, I think the mayor's trying to ask, if you, if you feel, ask the question to him, he's wanting you to direct it to him, so.
It doesn't matter who answers it.
Or if not, that's fine.
Doesn't matter who answers it. You know, the mayor was speaking for you, I guess. So, can, can you answer that question?
Specifically, what's going to be the difference?
And introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Ryan Mesh, LUS Fiber.
Yeah, I'm, just want a clarification as to what exactly that means, that, that, that your business model is different. Can you expound on that for me?
Yes, sir. So, some of the big keynotes is that we're going to go after different markets, some of that's a competitive confidentiality, but competitive markets that have a higher rate of return, diversifying our services as far as creating an office of innovation, where we're going to go and actually offer some level of consulting services. We have a lot of bright men and women that have been there since the beginning, so we're going to increase revenue in different ways. So that's not only going to be hitting different markets, being more successful, and whenever we do spend capital dollars, but we're also going to be expanding. So we're going to be able to leverage some of this broadband stimulus money, we're actively researching how to grow our network, so I, I think it's going to be a, in the very short term, we're going to see a different LUS Fiber footprint, revenue opportunities, along with a, a long list of, of successful and some wins.
And also, I'll, I'll amend my answer, there are additional duties, just with the expansion of the market, just the expansion of the customer base, just the expansion of the product base that you will be managing and leading, ideas that I don't even know about, that, that you brought to my attention, because that's not my expertise, so, yeah, I amend my answer, there will be additional duties.
Okay, that's fine. I guess then my, then my next question, this is probably a rhetorical question, and that would be, how come we wasn't doing none of this stuff before, for a year and a half?
Thank you. Hey, that's my question, too, and it's not just a year and a half. I think for 10 years, when you had, and we don't have to beat this dead horse, but for 10 years, we had, look, hey, we had, we had an unlawful subsidy from LUS to LUS Fiber that didn't invite the entrepreneurial spirit. We had somebody or a system in place that didn't, that didn't invite that hunger. You know, the, the year and a half comment, I'm very thankful for the year and a half that Kayla served as our interim director. Again, world pandemic, lot of moving parts, a new mayor president that's learning some things, still learning some things, council, a new council, new, new form of government. Look, she did a great job keeping LUS Fiber afloat and actually getting new customers. As a matter of fact, under those conditions, I'm surprised that, that she did so well. So very thankful for her, extremely thankful. Now, another thing, you have to understand, what, we're putting, we're kind of putting Ryan on the spot, I know you had some thoughts that you had put together for the council. It would, it wouldn't bother me if we did a presentation on LUS Fiber. This is your asset, this is the City of Lafayette's asset, but we're talking about, if, if you take Ryan Mesh out of the way, you, you should not make, you should not make this decision based on one individual, you really shouldn't. You should base it on, are we going to be competitive for LUS Fiber going forward? Are we going to have a COO position that we don't have to worry about being at an unfair advantage to compete with the telecommunications market that we're in? We know, we hear all the time, run, run government like a business. This is a business. Unlike Parks and Rec where, yeah, we're okay, we're not making a profit because it's a service, this is a business, and we have to, we have to set up its foundation to be competitive. We're, we're asking, actually, I'm directing this director to be competitive in that, in that industry, we need to be competitive on who we fill this with. So don't make the decision based on an individual, make it on the, on the pure notion that you support LUS Fiber.
So my, my question wasn't, wasn't meant to be an attack on Kayla. See, Kayla, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it, it wasn't meant to be an attack on her, by, by no means. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Yes, so, Ryan Mesh, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what are your plans on moving LUS Fiber, you know, just moving forward, from, say, since you got hired?
So...
To in the future?
So just what I've done since I've been hired? So, just what I've done since I've been hired? Or is that what you want to kind of say?
Take.
Yeah, so we can go on that. So, just in the short timeframe, we went from having business installs that were averaging two weeks. That was a big concern. We're losing customers. We average 4.3 days. We now do next day and same day installs. We're highly competitive, but we were running at a different pace. So, now we're really going to push the envelope. We can no longer just sit. Our competitors are continuing to grow. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of stimulus money out there. And if we don't shine quickly, we're going to be passed up. So, we're investing in our infrastructure. It's older, so we need to go and try to keep up with the needs. The pandemic showed us that. Also, strategic partnerships with other communities. So, these other areas around Acadia that just are underserved, essentially broadband and high-quality broadband access is going to determine what cities thrive and which cities don't make it. So, we're able to leverage our unique infrastructure to go and not only increase revenue, but also help our community partner throughout the parish and outside the parish.
And as far as employees, because I remember some time, I think when we had the freeze a couple of months ago, around in December, somewhere in that area, that I had a lot of constituents complaining about there wasn't up. I mean, they didn't have enough, I guess there was not enough employees from Fiber to bring them back online. There was a lot of business people stayed downline, offline, because of the amount of help they were getting from LUS. And they were complaining about LUS Fiber. And they were complaining about when they would make calls, they kept telling them that, well, we sent us, we're not there. But unfortunately, we did not have enough employees. Am I correct in understanding that? Or it was just a say-so?
No, that was, were we talking about for the storm?
Yes.
So, since then, we've been in negotiations to get some intergovernmental agreements with these other providers. So, by the time that storm hits, we already have, you know, fiber optics splicers and technicians out. We revamped our whole system so that we can go and better serve and quickly get these customers up.
Okay. I think they said it right. Oh, my next question is that as far as the firm, I need to direct it to the mayor president. I'm sorry. The firm, there was a firm that more or less gave you the permission, not they gave you the permission, but gave you the authority or told you that there would be the salary. That's what I'm talking about, what Ms. Cook was talking about, as far as the salary. They were saying that the salary is very competitive, correct? There was a firm that, who paid for that firm to make that decision?
So, there's two recommendations. There's our consulting engineers, which you guys all unanimously approve. So, I definitely trust their opinion. And they recommend it anywhere from 120,000 to 210,000. Then there's a linked executive search, which spawned about roughly 250 interested candidates. I think it's very prudent of us, me never running a telecommunications market. While I have the authority to appoint anybody that I choose, I would not be doing due diligence if I didn't rely on expert advice. And I feel like we went with the best linked executive search. You know, again, Forbes Top 10, two years in a row. I don't think it can get much better than that. Their recommendation was anywhere from 236,000 to 325,000. Now, keep in mind, that's with a salary plus bonus. We can't do bonus because it's a municipally-run telecommunications market. But I do believe the 175,000 base salary, but with our total compensation with retirement, things like that, makes this a very competitive spot. And look, Ryan, no offense, you may not be here forever. We need this position to be competitive. So, if he's not, then we don't have to go back to a salary that's very much not competitive. If you want to compete, you need to be competitive. So, I trust our consulting engineer. I hope you guys, and I know you guys do trust the consulting engineer, you wouldn't have proven if you didn't. I trust their recommendation of 120 to 210. I think 175, right in the middle, is very fair, but also competitive. But I also trust our linked executive search consultant as well.
How much was the consultant was not?
How much?
How much?
Did we pay him? Is that what you're saying? How much do you remember? 35? It was a while.
But we did pay him. That's my understanding.
Well, absolutely. I don't know anybody that would work for free at that.
Well, no, I understand. I just want to make sure that I want the council members and everyone to know that we did pay him for that advice.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And I thought it was, look, to get 250, over 250, you know, I was about to say qualified candidates, not all qualified, but interested candidates and to windle it down from a nation search. I appreciate that. Also, Attorney Abar did mention about the consulting engineer. While it's not a requirement to get their approval, I did, again, I'm not an engineer and I'm not a telecommunications CEO. I thought it was good exercise of good faith and, you know, in accordance with my fiduciary duty to at least, when we got down to two candidates, to say, are they qualified? I didn't need them to make a recommendation. They didn't have the benefit of seeing all 250 folks that were interested. But the answer was yes to both of them. So, I felt comfortable going forward. Because I'm going to tell you, if they came back and said he's not qualified, well, then it doesn't make sense to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do find this quite awkward, because Ryan, this is not about you. And I appreciate that we said it's not, you know, we're not, I don't, you know, I don't think that you're not qualified. That is not the situation. I just, I'm still struggling with the number. And when you accepted the position, did you understand that what was budgeted was 125?
I did, with the exception that it was going to go to the 175.
Okay, so you already offered that at the beginning?
Subject to approval.
Subject to approval.
Yeah, he was offered subject to council approval.
Yes, subject to council approval.
Because I'm sorry, but I'm still having trouble with that number. And if our, you know, our consulting engineers gave us the range of 120 to 200, I'd like to think that all the programs that you're talking about, the increased revenues, all the things that we're going to do for LUS, you know, right now, we're budgeted for the 125. You know, who's to say next year, we take that, we increase it based on, you know, what kind of performance and what kind of, you know, activity we have in LUS, what improvements we see. So, you know, I'd like to officially offer an amendment at this point, if I could, please, to amend the salary to retain it at the 125. I'm not sure where legal is. Do I need?
She's making an official motion to amend the current ordinance to read, instead of the proposed amount, to read to 125. That's her motion. Do we have a second to that emotion? The motion, second to that motion. I have a second by Councilman Lazar. Legal, is there anything you need to add to this? Or? I'm sorry, your mic is live, so.
Okay. It may be that we need Mr. Abar up here, and it might be a question for Ms. Toops, because the amendment, the body of the ordinance, this is just a typical formatting for a budget amendment. The actual numbers are reflected in the exhibit that's attached to the ordinance. And so, it may be that we need some technical assistance as to where that number would be substituted in for, because you've got benefit line items, and you've got salary and so forth. So, if you look at the exhibit attached, now, my question is, and I don't have the answer to this, is the current budget at 125? So, it may not be that this amendment is appropriate. It's not needed. In other words-
Mike, why don't you come back up?
Yeah. In other words, my thought, Chairman, I'm sorry, chairperson, is that if you simply vote down the amendment, it stays at 125.
Yeah, that was, I was, I don't know what, I mean, I'm taking everyone's word for it, that the current salary is 125. But there's no need for an amendment to this to say, I want to change it to 125. I think it's just, if you don't do anything with it, it stays status quo. So, not to get off topic, but while I'm up here, I looked at the answer to your question, and I looked at the budget ordinance for the 2018, 2019 budget year, and also the date that the charter was voted on. I was a year off on the chartered vote. But the 2018, 2019 budget, that process begins in the summer. I saw the budget message from July of 2018, so I assume budget hearings started sometime after that. Your 2018 budget ordinance was adopted, final adoption was on September 6 of 2018, took effect, of course, on November 1 of 2018. The election was December 8 of 2018. That was the sequence of events.
Well, let's clean up a little bit here. It's that we do have a current motion on the floor. A question was asked to Ms. Toop, CFO, about the current, the current salary being, can you confirm the number four, please, as that was approved?
Sure. But I just did a quick and dirty, and I already lost my count. I think I have seven people, two, three, four, making 170 and over. So, I don't know where you got your numbers from.
Well, Lori, I guess, again, the question is, did we approve last year's budget for to read 125? That's the question.
Six people not counting that position are making over 170 or over. So, I'm not sure, yeah, I kind of really wonder where you got your numbers.
Lori, I'm asking a question about the-
Yeah, it is 125.
So, it is, so at some point at the last year's budget, we all sat here and said 125 for a director of LUS Fiber seems good. And at no point was that mentioned. And somehow it must have been missed.
Oh, it was missed. I'll tell you.
Hold on, I'm asking Lori a question.
Well, she works for me.
Okay, well, Mayor.
I definitely would have liked us to point that out. And I wish I would have noticed. I wish I would have known that. Maybe my first budget process, I definitely missed it. But this is definitely, you know, when we're talking about making LUS Fiber competitive, especially, I don't know if y'all caught, because no questions have been really asked of Ryan. But I don't know if y'all caught what he meant, what he said about stimulus dollars coming into the state of Louisiana. We are in a pivotal, pivotal time in LUS Fiber's history with a $110 million debt hanging over our head. Lori Toops, our CFO, just gave some very pivotal information, some facts. Whether we missed it last budget or not should be irrelevant. We have a duty, we have a duty to Lafayette. We have a duty to our telecommunications company. We have a duty to be competitive. We need our CAO's position, irregardless of who occupies it, to be competitive with a competitive salary. Because if he's gone, I got to go be able to compete and get someone quickly to be able to handle what Ryan referenced. And no one is talking about it. But when that money comes in, we need someone at the helm that gets the legislative process, that gets going into other markets. And I know that with a competitive salary, we can do that.
So, again, thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Cook, go ahead. Go ahead, buzz in again, I'm sorry.
Okay, so tell me what you just said again. So, you're telling me that-
It's a highly paid department.
I know. But so, we had our interim director was getting, she was getting paid 125?
I'm looking in the budget book. It says 124, 344, just to be exact.
Somewhere in that range. But then, but then we had people making more than her in the department?
No, she was making, if she was making the budgeted salary, it was 124, 344.
But who was making 170, that you're telling me? There were people in the department making 170?
No, no, no. There were, there's several people making over 70. So, if you're looking at 70 for a director, we have seven people making more than that. So, I don't-
Wait, seven people making more than 70,000?
Yeah.
Okay. The highest paid was the director?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was thinking you were saying there was people making 170,000.
No, no, no. And you have an employee making 110. So, I mean, it's-
Can we meet somewhere in the middle?
Well, we're going around, is that we had a motion on the floor. Councilwoman Cook made a motion for 125. Do you want to continue with that motion, based on?
I don't need that motion, apparently.
Okay, so you were withdrawing that motion?
If we, well, I don't know.
Yeah, you would withdraw the motion that's on the floor if you want to retain the salary at the current amount, which is 124, 344. I think that's what she just said. If you want to retain it, you would withdraw the amendment motion that is on the floor. And what he's saying, and Legal could correct me if I'm wrong, what he's saying is that you would just defeat the ordinance.
Correct. If we want to keep it at 124, whatever it is. Okay.
So, are you withdrawing?
I am withdrawing that.
All right, we can keep going on with the conversation then. Councilwoman, buzz off for now. Councilman Lazar, you have the floor.
I'm still kind of trying to figure out the process and the procedural part, okay? We've kind of heard some conflicting information about the role that the consulting engineer does. Well, no, I'm not saying you create, I'm not saying it's anything you said or didn't say, okay? So, we're saying that the consulting engineers, Mike, did you say that there is no obligation on the part of the city to engage the consulting engineers in this process? So, we don't need their approval?
With regard, correct. That, with regard to the fiber director, that's correct.
Okay. We don't need their approval. Okay.
Correct.
Now, back to you, Mayor. What, to what extent were they involved in this process? You know, at what stage did they get involved? And to what extent were they involved? And what was their final, you know, I don't want to say opinion, because you say they didn't give an opinion, but however you want to call it. What was their final, you know what my question is, right? Okay.
I think I do.
Okay, you have it, yeah.
I think I understand your question. I definitely understand the intent. And look, it's okay, it's a difficult situation. Towards the very end, and again, I knew we didn't need it, because I got advice from Legal to tell me what my, you know, requirements were. But I felt it was good of me to do. I thought I was doing my due diligence, at least inquire on it. So, once we got to those final candidates, once the, you know, the search director went through the 250, our committee went through it, I interviewed, CAO interviewed, chief of staff interviewed, and we got down to two candidates, we wanted to take that additional step before we brought them in again for further interviews in business plan analysis and things like that. To just answer one question, are they qualified? Because the consulting engineer didn't have the benefit of having all those other discussions, nor, I think, just to have a layer of separation, have a layer of objectivity to it, say, look, are these guys qualified? Before we even go further, the answer was yes to both candidates. We went forward. We made a decision. And I know we did the right, made the right decision.
Okay, so the only question then was, were the final two qualified?
Right. And they did interviews. Ryan could probably tell you about it better than I can, because he went through it.
Okay, Ryan, what was the process?
Which part? The consulting engineer?
Yeah.
So, it was, she was essentially going through my resume, qualifications, understanding what my experience was, just overall goals. It was a broad topic of just who am I, what do I know, what have I done? You know, that was the conversation.
Do you recall how long that interview lasted?
It was 30 minutes to an hour. It lasted, I think it lasted a little bit extra. I think there were some issues or something, like there was a certain time constraint. But I don't recall the exact timeframe.
Okay. Did she ask for any additional information?
She didn't.
She didn't?
She did not, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there obviously is a lot of confusion about previous salaries and what went on. Ms. Toops, I'd like to try to take us back about eight years or so ago, when LUS and LUS Fiber existed. We had one director that was basically doing both jobs. And each job was entailing $125,000 salary, hence the $250,000 the previous director was getting. I think that 125,000 that we're deriving was basically the original salary paid to the fiber director. So, that's been in existence for eight years plus. So, I would have to kind of agree with the mayor president in that to be competitive, we can't hold that salary, $125,000. It doesn't make sense to do that, to bring in a director that's going to do well. This was a combined salary to pay a man a quarter of a million a year to run both departments. So, it never got brought back to the council to be adjusted above the 125,000. It was always one man making two large salaries. So, at this point now, we have two different directors, two different salaries, two different departments. In order to maintain competitive and have a director there worth the salt, I can agree with the mayor president, that we need to increase the salary to maintain the feasibility of having a viable department in fiber. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm back with a new number. I agree with what Andy, what Councilman Nakkan said. So, that we've had that number for a while. And before that one person was trying to do it all for that amount of money. And now, you know, I'd like to see fiber grow and do a whole lot more. So, I'm not opposed to, you know, a salary increase. I just still have a trouble with the number. So, if we look at the consulting engineers, you know, range that they gave us, the 120 to the 200, I'd like to propose 150 at this point. And I do have one question for you. Have you ever been the director of an fiber optic company before? This is your first go around?
Not a director, but I've done consulting, where essentially I've had to go and look at the entire organization from business, operations, engineering, see whether they're not making as much money, and actually turn them around. So, it's easier in a consulting role, you're able to just give advice. But I have success in multiple facets of that, whether it's turning it up or turning around an existing municipally-owned broadband company.
Which would be a great skill set for the director's position. I understand that. But I'd like to propose that 150, if I can go back again to another amendment. Do I need to amend this, since it was not the original?
So, we have somebody offering an amendment to this to reflect from the proposed amendment for Mayor President Gillery to changing it to $150,000 salary. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilman Lewis has seconded. I don't see any other council discussion. Mr. Lewis, you took yourself off. Okay, so you're fine. Okay. We have an amendment on the floor reflecting it to change to 150. Councilman Nakkan, we'll go to council discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I do have one other comment to make. We basically have a gentleman here who accepted a position in good faith, that it would have a good possibility of a salary increase of 175. And that is a competitive salary, according to all the consultants that we had. I don't see if it's worth squabbling over $25,000 for this gentleman if he can turn fiber around and bring the company back to where it needs to be. I think it's worth the investment. The mayor president always has the option, if, being as he hired him, to fire him. If he sees there's no successes there, we can be his ear and bug-
If he sees there's no successes there, we can beat his ear and bug him enough to say, we're not seeing the, what you promised, you know? This is not a permanent position, this is not a civil service job. I, I think that this is a, a thing we need to move forward. This man accepted this job based on that, that, that possibility. And I would be highly disappointed if I was him. We have a chance and opportunity to see what he can do for us. I, I say we move forward with the amendment as is, I mean, with the ordinance as is.
Mayor President, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and look, I appreciate that, Councilwoman, I know that you're trying, and, and I think that you see the, the benefit in, in being competitive, and, and that's, that's the theme tonight, because it's, it's a reality. He is currently serving as the interim director, because he's in a civil service position. To Councilman Nakkan's, and I'm going to be blunt, but to Council Nakkan's point, if he doesn't turn around, I will fire him. He knows that. I, I don't mean to be blunt, but we have a $110 million debt hanging over our head. I, look, however you felt about fiber before in the past, 2020 taught us something different, maybe the last five years taught us something different about telecommunications. So for someone to take a leap of faith with a, a Mayor President that has extreme urgency in this regard, we, we need to not only be competitive, but we need to make sure that we properly compensate. And for someone to leave a civil service position, to come in here knowing that if there's not performance, he will not have a job, I think it's only fair to fairly compensate him. Um, I thought that was a very good point, by Council Nakkan, not to be too blunt, not saying anything I hadn't told you before. But it's, um, we're here, and we, our back, look, our back is against the wall with fiber. We are now at a point where I see a positive light, I really do. I'm a fiber customer, okay? I, I'm, I'm liking what I'm seeing, but as, as a Mayor President, I'm liking what I'm seeing. And I know the direction of fiber, I know that we have great things on the horizon, and I know that this person has the ability to take us where we need to be. So I, I'd, look, I do ask you, while I appreciate it, I ask you to keep going in that direction, go to a figure that, that is right in the middle of where our consultants recommend it to be, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Okay, last time. I'd like to think that 150 is fair, I mean, I like, I mean, I think that's a fair salary. It was right in the middle of what was suggested. You know, there's always room for improvement on the salary after the first year, so I mean, you know, there's, there's room to, to make adjustments on it, so, you know, again, I'm probably looking like the meanie here, but I, I still believe that that's, that I'd like to stick with that if that's, you know, okay with everyone, or, or not okay, but I'm sticking with it, so I'm going with it.
All right, let's vote on the amendment, now that's council discussion, do we have any public com...
No, no public comment.
Quick comment, I apologize. Uh, so Fort Collins and Colorado just got their director, I think, a couple of years ago. It's municipally owned broadband, I think he's at over 200, if not 250. Just wanted to kind of just show you some of the other guys, I think EPB's at 300. And I, and I'm, you know, I'm open to, you know, if, if I don't perform, I'm been told I'm out, as I should be. So I look forward to, to be able to, to prove it right.
Yeah, what size companies are those, or how many import?
EPB is almost double the size. Um, however, Fort Collins is not their startup right now. So they're, they're actually having some, some struggles.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, no other council discussion, uh, this vote, go ahead, I'm sorry, do you have any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote for the amendment as is.
The amendment at 150,000.
Yes, yes, at 150,000.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
All right, and now we're going to go to a vote to vote as amended for 150,000.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Thank you, moving on, Jeremy, please read.
City Ordinance 59, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, specifically Article 1, crimes and offenses in the city of Lafayette, particularly to add Section 62-33.2, unauthorized entrance in or upon parks and playgrounds.
Can I get a motion in a second? I have a motion by Lazard, second by Cook, council discussion. I actually had a quick question that just came to my mind, maybe, I don't know, just happened to think, is this is on a city council ordinance, but does this also pertain to the parish parks as well? Are they going to have to have their, I figured you'd be able to answer that.
No, thank you, so in the past it may have, but because we've worked with the municipalities and the other parks out in the, outside the city limits, that's, it's no, no longer relevant, but a very good question, so this would only be within the city limits.
All right, thank you, Mayor, that's all I had, and then Councilman Lazard, you're, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, Paul, can you, uh, can you...
Paul, yes. Looking over here. Legal, your mic is hot.
Paul, what, what are the, uh, what are the penalties for, for violation of this ordinance? And can you reference the, the source form as well, please?
Sure, under the LCG Code of Ordinances, because there's not a specific penalty stated in 33.2, there's a general penalty in the Code of Ordinances under Chapter 1, Section 9, it would be 1-9, I think it's subparagraph C, if I'm remembering correctly, but it's definitely in 1-9. Uh, general penalty for violation of the code for an act that's declared unlawful, which this is in 33.2, is up to a $500 fine, or six months in prison, or both, for each offense.
Okay. Can we, can we amend the, uh, can we, can we add our own penalty provisions to this ordinance?
You could, you could offer an amendment to amend the actual provision that's being proposed of 62-33.2, and add a specific penalty for that unlawful, unlawful activity.
Okay. Got a couple of issues, but one of them has to do with the penalties. And, and I think the penalties are a little too steep, in my opinion, for, for being in the park.
Well, and, and let me clarify this, the, those are maximum, in other words, it's not to exceed 500 or six months.
It makes sense.
I, I understand. I, I understand that those are max, I, I have a little bit of experience with this. So, but I still have an issue. I, I, I think it's entirely too, too steep for, for being in the park. Uh, you know, five minutes past 10 o'clock, or 10, 15 minutes past 10 o'clock. I think the penalties are a little too steep, so I, I would like to offer an amendment as it pertains to the penalties, uh, for a fine not to exceed $200, and jail time not to exceed 30 days.
You said not to exceed $200?
Right.
Okay, and then...
Well, I, I, I think that's...
How about we have some more discussion, because there's a few other people that want to speak?
Yeah.
That you would like to make the motion.
That, that's my, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll start, I, I do have a few other...
Okay.
Issues with it, so you want me to finish up?
Yep.
While I'm here? Okay. Is Hollis here?
Hollis, is Hollis still here?
We do have Chief Glover here, Chief Glover, minds you works security as far as the parks and recreation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you need him up?
Huh?
Do you need him to come up?
Yeah, he's coming up.
Okay.
Chief, did, did you have any input in the draft under this ordinance?
I looked at, uh, some of it from the legal standpoint, I did not give any input, I agreed with it, particularly the hours of park closure, but...
Okay.
In terms of the fines, no.
Okay, so you didn't have, really have any input in it, in the drafting of it?
Not in the fines, just agreeing, looking and reading.
Just, just the hours part?
Yes.
You agree with the hours part?
Yes.
Okay, that's cool. So you really can't answer my question then. We, we do have Greg here, right?
We do?
Mr. Logan? I'm not able to, well, I think that mic is yours, is it hot?
I think so.
There we go. Identify yourself, please.
Gregory Logan, Lafayette City Parish Attorney.
Greg, are, are we going to make, I don't see any exceptions in here for, for like special events? Or, for example, if, if somebody rent a center for a function, and that function goes past 10 o'clock, okay? Uh, how, how do we, uh...
We would address that in the rental agreement, that would be an exception that we could address in the rental agreement. I mean, basically, this is dealing with after-hours parties in the parks. I do not think the police will be writing tickets for a family leaving the park 10 or 15 minutes late. It's, it's 10 o'clock at night, um, it's time for the parks to close, it's, it's been a security issue, and, um, again, that's what the, the criminal justice process is for, and I think the judge will set the fine accordingly, it's a maximum fine.
No, I mean, I, I have no, I'm, I'm not debating the hours, and I'm certainly not debating the need for the ordinance, okay?
Okay.
That, that's not, that's not an issue for me.
Councilman Lazard, may I, I might be able to add something to that as well. The way the ordinance is written, in your circumstance of a party maybe going after 10 o'clock, 10:05, 10:15, whatever, the police officer, or whoever it may be that comes upon that, cannot write them a, a citation for violating the code, because they have to first tell them, okay, now it's time to leave. It's only when they fail or refuse to leave, and they've been forbidden to stay, is when they now become in violation of the code.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah. I understand that fully and completely. I, I would just be a whole lot more comfortable, uh, if we actually had the language in the ordinance, you know, pertaining to what I, what I just mentioned. I, I would just be a little more, a lot more comfortable, i- if that language was actually, you know, was actually in the ordinance. Just me. The, the other question for you, Chief, is will police officers be directed to strictly enforce this ordinance with no exceptions? And, and my concern is that, that this ordinance is applied, uh, fairly, uh, across the board.
I certainly think that any time a law like this is passed, equality and application is a must, and that's going to fall on me, I'll be reviewing it, making sure things are properly done. If I can be blunt...
Yeah, please do.
I will not stand for misapplication in enforcing the law. Uh, and that falls on me, and I'll make sure, if a citizen has a complaint about a misapplication when it comes to equality, if a member of the council has a complaint, or any citizen has a complaint, I'll be addressing it, just like I do, I give my number out publicly to people that can call me. In addition to that, this is a safety measure, where we're trying to do things to make the parks safer in terms of lighting, posting signs, putting up cameras, even down to the police department buying what we call blue phones. These are the things that are, something that's going on in the park, somebody can run over and say, we need the police, so this is in conjunction, and it's, uh, something we think will help us to be safer.
And I'm, and I'm good with all that. I'm good with all that, I agree with all that. So, I, I guess... I'm, I'm back to, I'm back to the language about, uh, about, about the exceptions and, and the process, uh, you know, for special events, or whatever the case may be. So do I...
The police department issues all of those permits, when there's something going on in the park, that comes through the Office of Unusual Occurrences, Special Events. So when they put together this contract and it's signed, it's approved by the police department, language can be in it that you go beyond...
Well, let's just make sure that the, uh, that, that rental agreement or whatever, uh, maybe we have to amend it to, to include some language to, to address that. Yeah, I, I would be a whole lot more comfortable with that.
Can you be more specific on what language you would like to include? I guess I'm, I'm, well, he still has the floor, so let's...
I have a recommendation, if...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, perhaps we could have a motion to include language that would have an exception in accordance with a contract with Lafayette Consolidated Government?
That's fine.
So when they rent it, perhaps, so maybe if, if a council would consider that?
That's...
I would support that.
That's exactly where I'm going with it. Uh, that, that will take care of that. So, I have, uh, so, Madam Chair, I still have the, I guess we still have a discussion from my motion to amend the...
But we still don't have a second, and you had a few more things you wanted to add, so...
Okay, right, right, yeah, sure. Okay.
Are you ready to make your motion, or do you want to give the floor to others and come back and make that official motion?
I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion, and we'll have to continue the discussion, I guess, however you want to do it.
Okay, uh, let's, okay, we have a motion to change the penalties to not exceed $200 and/or 30, is it and/or, or is it just or?
And the jail time not to exceed 30 days.
Or, or the jail not to extend 30 days, and then language and accommodation too, and you said, but I was trying to catch it.
Yes, ma'am chair, and just one thing before y'all vote on that amendment for, on remorse of the fines. Okay, so the, the language would, just for you to consider, would be language to include an exception in accordance with a contract with Lafayette Consolidated Government.
Contract with Lafayette Consolidated Government.
And, and Madam Chair, I can give you some language for the, the, the fine and penalty. It, it would be a sentence at the end of the current proposed provision, and it would read, "Any person found guilty of a violation of this section shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $200, or imprisonment for a term not exceeding 30 days, comma, or both such fine and imprisonment," period. That would be the sentence.
All right, so we have those two motions on the floor, do I have a second? Well, we're, we're doing this first, we can go to comments.
Yeah.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, second by Councilwoman Cook, going on council discussion, is that all you have, Mr. Lazard?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Okay, thanks. Paul, I, I have a question, I heard you say something earlier. If, uh, if someone is in the park at, after these hours that are, that we're getting ready to vote on, the police, from my understanding, or maybe Chief can answer that, they, more or less give them a warning, and if they do not leave, that's when we give them a penalty or something like that? Or soon they go, soon the police officer finds someone and say, hey, you got, the hours are over, wait, you should have been gone from the park at 10 o'clock, or, and it's 10:30 or 11 o'clock? So does that automatically give them a fine?
No, the, the way the, the provision is written is, they have to first receive either orally or in writing, the direction that they are no longer to remain in the park, or they're forbidden in the park, or they can't get in the park, whatever it is, because it's either entering, remaining, et cetera. If they fail to comply with that request to leave the park, now they are remaining as forbidden, and now they are in violation of that section.
Okay.
So they have to affirmatively choose not to listen to the instruction to leave the park.
Okay, I just want a clarification on that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Mayor, did you have something you wanted to add, you're still buzzing?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, just one thing on the, on the fines and potential jail time. I, I appreciate the, the intent from where Councilman Lazard, I believe where you're coming from. I would just caution you on this, and I would keep them the same, only to allow the judges and the judiciary to have that discretion for predicate offenses. So if you have someone that's violating this for second or third or fourth time, the judges, as you know, Councilman, do look at that, and to, to cap them at $200, or to cap them at 30 days, you're, you're really, you're really limiting the judiciary's power for predicate offenses, because if someone knows that they're just limited, this is the max, it's... it's not as helpful to our officers for a deterrent. I also believe in the judiciary, and I know that they're very fair, and I don't think they're going to a six-month sentence. I've never seen that in my practice, as in my full-time practice days. And I just, I have faith in the process. So I would strongly urge the council to stay in line with the misdemeanor guidances of six months, $500 max, and keep them, keep them the same. But I do appreciate it.
All right, Councilman Nocan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can see Mr. Lazard's intent in his amendment regarding the fines. But in some ways, I agree with the Mayor President, too, that this lowering of the fine and the 30 days should be for a first offense only. After that, the judge should have the discretion. If there's habitual offenders of this ordinance, then it needs to be addressed in a stronger manner. Because obviously, $200 is not going to deter, then we need to increase it. So I would say to me, if you don't mind, adding the verbiage for a first offense, and then after that, going back to the original fine. Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. In your experience, since you've been here, is this, I know that a lot of other parks have these times. I know the Monka's Park plans on when they officially open having times that people, and it's the same times we've selected here. So in your time here, are you seeing a lot of accidentals? Do you see this being a common issue?
The downtown parks, definitely. There are some residential areas, too, where we see problems. The big issue is someone will sign an agreement with us, and the agreement says your event is from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Or not 10:00, 10, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., or something like that. And they'll stay two, three hours beyond and continue to make money in violation of the agreement. And some of them spill until the night, you know, like they'll rent from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and they'll stay till nine or 10:00, and we have to go in and tell them, show them the contract, and ask them to leave. So it is an issue, but it's not something that's prevalent. But we do run into it from time to time.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes. I do believe the intent of what Councilman Lazard is going for. But I also, I do believe that, you know, if we read it the way it was written, as in the max of the, you know, that I don't think, I do trust the judicial system as well, that if it's a repeat offender, we need to have that max in order to actually make a statement with him. So I, you know, I think maybe if we can, I don't know if you want to withdraw that amendment, but I do think that, that it's, the way it's worded right now, I think it allows for that, the flex, you know, flexibility in it. So that's kind of how I'm reading it.
Okay. I'm not seeing any council discussion. There is a motion on the floor to make two amendments. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Okay, I will, I will agree to amend my amendment to say, to say for a first offense.
On both items?
Well, it's only one, because it's only applied to the penalty structure. So I will agree to say for a first offense.
Okay, so you were amending your amendment. Do we have a second on that amendment to the amendment?
Well, Nanette, you second that motion, so you, are you okay with the new adjusted amendment?
Adding first offense, yes.
The first offense, okay.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we already have, we have this motion by Glenn Lazard, second by Nanette Cook for the amendment.
Thank you. Councilman Lazard, you serve the floor.
I'm good.
Thank you. Council, Mayor President?
Purely just to help out, house cleaning, clarification. So we would be directing the judiciary on a first offense. It would be no more than $200, no more than 30 days. And all other future offenses would be up to six months and up to $500.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to clarify, again, having practiced this and looking at these sentencing guidelines, it's always helpful to make sure we're all on the same page. And legislative intent is very big for our judiciary, and that's you guys, so thank you.
And it also includes what the mayor said, and also to provide for the exception in accordance with a contract or rental agreement with LCG.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor, is that all you have?
Oh, no, hey, look, I appreciate the dialogue. I really do. It reminds me of my law school days. That's good.
Freshen it off, freshen it off.
That's right.
Is that all you have, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add? Nope?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We now need to go to, we need a vote on the amendment. Councilman, the vote on the amendment to the ordinance.
Yes.
Should we clarify the amendment just to make sure?
One more time, sure.
The amendment is to include language that a first offense, first offense in the penalties would not exceed $200 or imprisonment not to exceed 30 days, but it could be up to the $500 that, but future subsequent offenses. And also, it includes provide for an exception in accordance with a contract or rental agreement with LCG.
Everybody's got that? All right, perfect. Let's vote on the amendment.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to amend is approved.
All right. Vote on the amendment as is. No.
The ordinance as amended.
Ordinance as amended.
Correct.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
City Ordinance 602021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $27,926 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, authorizing the transfer of matching funds in the amount of $9,309 from Fund 101 and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
I have a motion by Cook. Do I have a second? A second by Nocan, council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Ordinance 612021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $26,880 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, authorizing the transfer of matching funds in the amount of $6,720 from Fund 101 and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Cook, second by Lazard, council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City Ordinance 622021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of fund balance in Fund 101 and Fund 401 in the amount of $5,850,000 and appropriating within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division for additional funding needed for new drainage projects.
Ooh, everyone wants a motion and a second. This one. I have a motion by Nocan, second by Cook, council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comment.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We do have one speaker, Dr. Randy Pilgrim.
And both mics are live, so.
I'll just use one. Thank you.
You're welcome to go back and forth.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. In my three minutes, I'm speaking in support of this with a comment. And the comment is, everybody knows, well documented, well storied, the drainage problems and issues that we have, we got to fix them, right? The support that I have is because both the near-term, intermediate-term, long-term issues are big for all of us as citizens, for our families. And I'm sitting here with my neighbor, who unfortunately flooded last night. I have flooded in the past as well. I'm in your district, as you know. My caution on behalf of all of us is, please, don't let medium and long-term plans stand ahead of the obvious to do right now. In our particular area, there is gravity that drains right into our driveways. There are well-established routes to take that water and put it into the river, just like some of the drainage does already. And over the years, there's been more and more water coming in from dysfunctional drainage into our neighborhood. It's a very quick fix. It requires almost no infrastructure. We've even agreed personally, if it was permissible, to fund it ourselves. And it's not been done. My neighbor sits here with me today, flooded last night. Let's please also not let a dramatic example, even though last night was nothing like 2016, compare to the repeated, well-documented videos that we see of the times that we've almost flooded when there's a fix sitting right here in front of us. So there is a plea that the appropriation and the actual expenditures of the funds be in service of the obvious for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Doctor, for taking the time to be here with us. You know, to your neighbor, my heart goes out to you, really. And we, there's not a day that any of these council members or myself don't think about drainage. All of us virtually ran on drainage, and we haven't lost sight on it. Even during a pandemic, we met regularly, once a week, if not more than once a week. So what I would ask you to do, our Public Works Director's in the back, Chad Navoe, just give him your contact information before you leave, if you don't mind. And let's see what we can do, and, you know, kind of look at where we're at. Because there may be some plans that maybe wasn't made public, or maybe there's something to our, that our attention, we need to know. So let's look into it. But just to everybody out there, we haven't lost track. We're on this. There's a group of projects that are going to be completed by June 1st. And had this rain event happened just a couple weeks after yesterday, some of those projects would have been completed. I mean, one example comes to mind that is 99% complete, which is the Camellia Ponds, the widening. That saved houses from flooding. That's the easy wins. So we got the easy wins ahead of us, but we also have the long-term objective. This is more long-term that the council's voting on today. But we're going to have a group of projects that are completed by June 1st, a group of projects that'll be started by June 1st, and a group of projects that will be at least bid by June 1st. Some of those projects focus on localized flooding that no matter how much you deal with the watershed, the river, the laterals, it's just not gonna, because of past planning, it's just not going to affect it. But we, but that, our government gave permission to build. Our government broke it. Our government needs to fix it. That's what we're focusing on. And then, of course, you have the watershed initiative. So this is a little bit of a combination, easy wins, long-term planning. But we have a long ways to go. Even after the council, which I hope you guys fund this, I don't think there's any objection, especially under our circumstances. But we have to be real with ourselves. What we're facing together, the city council, the parish council, the administration, the community, is a long-term problem. We didn't get here overnight. We didn't get here in the last year or two. It took decades to get here, but we are committed to fixing it. And you're going to see some easy wins. But I want your feedback. If you don't mind, please give it to the Public Works Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Horrible, man, you know?
No other speakers.
Okay, Mayor, you requested to speak on the floor, but can you ex out, I think?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
When we talk about short, medium, and long-term solutions, Mayor, have we given any consideration to doing a comprehensive, and maybe that's in the works, you know, a comprehensive drainage study? You know, that would be the long term. You know, a comprehensive drainage study and come up with some concrete, comprehensive solutions.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
I was down. I should have stayed in. No, thank you, Councilman. More than just a study, actually, action items. And our Public Works Director, if he wants to comment, he can, but I think I can handle this one. So we are in primarily the Test for Million watershed. There is the Myrmidale watershed to the western part of our parish, but primarily it's a test for a million. And what we have all inherited is, well, we didn't have a parish plan, okay, when we came in. Not to say there wasn't good things going on before we got, before I got in office and before some of you got in office, but it doesn't mean we can't get better. So what we do is we meet once a month with all of the mayors and all of their public works departments, all of their civil engineers, once a month, sometimes twice a month, to discuss a parish-wide, and we no longer call it drainage plan, we call it stormwater management plan, because detention is one layer, moving water is one layer. The doctor mentioned a reference to that, moving water, draining water. And we're close. So we just signed a contract with an engineering firm. We have all of our civil engineers putting input into this. And it's very important, as you alluded to, for us to have a plan. We have to know where we're going. We can't just continue to chase a carrot on a stick, where, you know, there's a lot of energy here, so let's focus on that. We want to look at, this is a very methodical, very scientific-driven approach. But I, look, I defer to the engineers and the scientists. And I say scientists very literally, because we have UL involved. And so we have our academic side. We have our field side as far as the engineers go. And we have a lot of things that are, that are going to be very happy for, or very positive for our parish and in your future. That plan's probably, Chad helped me find, helped me out here, maybe six months away from being finalized, but we're very close to actually seeing movement. Now, on that note, we can't just wait for a plan to come around to not address issues. So we spent the last year, like I said, we didn't just come up with these three lists of these projects, June 1st, you know, completed by June 1st, started by June 1st, bid by June 1st. June 1st hurricane season, we set that as a benchmark when we took office on June 6, 2020. We have met that deadline. June 1st, 2021, there's going to be three other buckets. And I'm obviously presenting, keep it to them, keep the councils involved and the public informed. But it's, we have a lot of work to do. So I'm happy that we're going to have a plan, but we're not waiting for the plan to be complete to have action.
And that's why I classified that as a long-term solution.
I'm with you.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that's it for public comment. Let's go to a vote, please, to adopt.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply.
Joint Ordinance 162021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at public internet auction surplus miscellaneous movable property, which are no longer needed for public purposes, as per the attached list, internet auction.
We have a motion by Nocan, second by Lazard. Any public comment?
Council discussion.
No, ma'am. Okay, so call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? Motion to adopt is approved.
Okay. Okay, ask Jeremy to read the following. Oh, he already read that. Ask for a motion. Okay, we already did that. We already did the joint ordinance. We're moving on. Okay, ask for a motion and second to introduce in global items 18 through 20. A motion and a second. I got a motion from Lewis and a second from Nocan. Jeremy, can you read the ordinances, please?
City Ordinance 632021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of city general fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $35,000 to fund the local Palooza event with Downtown Lafayette Unlimited. City Ordinance 642021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $1,796.38 received from the United States Marshal Service and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department. City Ordinance 652021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into an entity-state agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development
with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for H dot zero one three seven one six, US 167 Camellia Boulevard Churchill Drive, Lafayette. City Ordinance 66, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 212 Karen Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Carol Tompkins Sincox and Byron Durant Sincox care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of Sam.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any council discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Uh, let's call for the vote in globo for items 18 through 21.
District three?
District three.
District four, move on.
District three, move on.
I'll just put on absent.
Move on.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to introduce in globo is approved.
All right, moving on, comments from the public. Um, comments from the public on any matter not on the agenda. This is the time to speak about topics related to city of Lafayette, relative, excuse me, to city of Lafayette that are not included as agenda items. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed for efficiency and to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Questions should be submitted in writing to the clerk of the council. The three-minute rule will be in effect. Uh, Ms. Williams, do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do have three speakers. The first of which is Scott Harris, and he will be followed by Corey Levier? Levier, I'm sorry, Levier.
Sorry.
My name is Scott Harris. I'm a small business owner here in Lafayette. Uh, my wife and I own Evangeline Throughway Storage. We also own another self-storage facility called Guardwell Self-Storage on Johnston. We rent trucks, we store boats and RVs. In the past 18 months, we've had approximately a dozen catalytic converters stolen from our rental trucks, from our customers' boats and RVs. These customers, huh, sorry, just gathering my thoughts here. Um, these customers are leaving my business thinking that they can escape these problems, but they can't escape these problems. This is going on all over the country right now. Last month, about a month ago tonight, I had seven catalytic converters stolen from my customers. I had a new customer come in after this happened, and as I was showing him a, a place to store his RV, he asked me, "Have you ever had any catalytic converters stolen?" I said, "Yes, I have." He told me that he had two stolen from the same RV over the past year. He's still storing with me, but only because it's more convenient. But it's my competitors who are having this problem as well. Our tire vendor, the guy who changes the tire, the tires on our rental trucks, three of his trucks have had catalytic converters stolen. These things cost about $1,000 to replace, each one. I don't know how much the fees are getting for these things, but they can walk over to a salvage yard or drive to a salvage yard on Cameron Street that has a large sign that says, "We buy catalytic converters." They walk in there, they plunk the catalytic converter on the counter, the salvage yard pays them, and they walk out with cash, no questions asked. They're selling these things for the precious metals, palladium, ro, rodium, rhodium? I forget, I don't know how to pronounce it, but this stuff sells for $25,000 an ounce. I'm just a, I'm just the tip of the iceberg here. I'm a small business, I'm a mom-and-pop business, my wife does the accounting, I do the maintenance, we both do property management. I was out cleaning up mud, debris from my parking lot this morning. I'm up. This is just for awareness, we need to do something about this.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Corey Levier, followed by Lydia Romero.
Thank you, I'm Corey Levier, living in Lafayette. And, um, you said we cannot speak about anything that was on the agenda? Is that the correct?
Right, correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, um, I don't see the special meeting on the agenda.
I think the agenda says on an agenda. So, yes, comments from the public on any item, not on an agenda, right.
So there was an agenda for the special meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I'm gonna hold my comments till later on that next time. Um, what I did want to come up and talk to the council about was to consider, uh, increasing the auxiliary police force. The auxiliary police force, when I was growing up, was something that men in the community were proud to do, just like being an auxiliary or volunteer firefighter, if you will. But in order for it to be done successfully, equipment is needed. Things are needed that these men who don't do it every day, but a lot of the men that want to do this are veterans who've been in combat, fought on behalf of this country, you know, they've done a lot of things already in their lives, kind of like me, and they're interested in being a part of the solution in our cities between, interaction between the community and the police. Now, if we begin a campaign to recruit, uh, auxiliary police officers that live in the community where they would be policing, I think not only would that be a benefit to the, to the current police department, it would be a benefit to the neighborhoods that those individuals live in, and it would add more pride in Lafayette to the people that are actually involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then, Councilman, uh, you sure?
Next, next speaker is Lydia Romero, and Stephanie Skinner gave me her, her note after the reading of the item.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lydia Romero, I live in Parish District One. Uh, since May of 2020, I have been denied entry to council meetings. I shared what happened to me with my district council member, Brian Taber, of Parish Council. Um, my concerns that I wasn't able to attend the meeting and it violated state laws. Um, when he didn't return any emails to me, uh, I contacted all of the Parish Council members and the City Council members, um, of the same issue, my being denied entry to the public meeting and that it violated state law. In July, by July, I hadn't received any response from anyone, so I contacted everyone again in July. Again, I still have never received a response. Um, even though, um, all my attempts to get help from everyone was ignored, I continued to try to attend public meetings and throughout the last year, and also sent other emails to all members. Uh, in February of this year, I was denied entry to the Parish Council meeting, witnessed another woman being denied entry to the Parish Council meeting. That same day, I was denied entry to the City Council meeting, the City Emergency Council meeting, which I actually had a speaker card filled out. I was showing it to everyone out the, at the door, and I was still refused entry to the public meeting. Um, in March of this year, I sent out public records requests for documents and communications on a number of subjects. One of the subjects was requiring temperature checks at the door. Um, that was responded to within 24 hours, and I was given two weeks for the documents to be produced, and I did receive them within two weeks. The second and third requests were in regards to the Louisiana Constitution, Louisiana revised statutes, um, and open meetings laws. And then, I also did a request on my own name, Lydia Romero. My second and third requests were responded to after six days, which is beyond the statutorily permitted five days, and I was given a preliminary two weeks for production of those documents. After a total of 45 days, I received some documents, but not all documents. The, um, documents provided in response to the Constitution did include my emails to the council members, and how were they, they were forwarded to the clerk, but there was no evidence of investigation or follow-up by any of you on any of my complaints. And then, um, it also shows that there was another resident who was concerned with open meetings violations and exclusion of members of the public to public meetings. Um, funnily enough, uh, in those documents with the Constitution and state laws, there was an email where temperature check was mentioned that actually was not in my public records request regarding temperature checks. Um, the documents I haven't received any information on, or not all the documents on, is my own name. They're telling me documents have to be redacted. What has to be redacted? I've already received all my emails.
Thank you.
So there's something within this government that is wrong.
Thank you.
I have a right to speak.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Ma'am?
I had five minutes.
I've given her, I've given her three warnings.
I have all the evidence. I would like accountability from everyone, everyone. I remember asking for the law to be followed. Yes, I'll start you with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know what, I'm not doing anything wrong to ask for the law to be followed from everyone.
Oh, Stephanie Skinner.
Hi, I'm Stephanie, I'm an assistant, a lawmaker. I have a question, could I ask the chief something really quick about the training?
No questions. But, but after you speak, you can grab him on the back.
I have, I have a comment.
I mean, no, don't, not grab him on the back, you can grab him when you're finished.
I have a comment, though, okay?
You can make a comment.
I hope that with that money, that police training money, that you're training for civil unrest in case something happens. We don't want the Soros-funded Marxist BLM, Antifa, I'm not smiling, sir. They do terrible damage, they commit crimes, they burn cities, they tear down statues, and I want the citizens of Lafayette protected, because these people are trained terrorists, okay, and they're paid to do exactly that. And then what they'll do is they'll have roaming mall mobs, rent-a-mobs, they'll come in on buses if we let them, and then they'll go through neighborhoods and they'll start harassing people and destroying property. And I want to make sure that they are ready for that, so we can prevent that from happening in our beautiful little area.
Thank you.
You know, we don't, we don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna, people need to go to jail when they do stuff like that. You can't threaten people, you can't destroy people's property and threaten people's lives and injure people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers, Madam Chair.
All right, and with that, council meeting's finished. Thank you all, have a good night.